Good morning, everyone. Pursuant to applicable law and my determination that attendance by remote means is necessary because an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to the declared public health disaster caused by COVID-19, this meeting is conducted by video conference. We will now have a roll call vote to establish a forum. Will the aldermen please make sure their microphones are unmuted when the clerk calls your name? And if you can, make sure that you speak up so the clerk can hear you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Good morning. Alderman Laspada.
Here.
Alderman Hopkins.
Here.
Alderman Dow.
Here.
Alderman King.
Present.
Alderman Harrison.
Present.
Alderman Sawyer.
Here.
Alderman Mitchell.
Present.
Alderman Harris.
Here.
Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Zalaski Garza.
Present.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Cardness.
Here.
Alderman Quinn.
Here.
Alderman Burke.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
I am from the South Side.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Moore.
Present.
Alderman Curtis.
Present.
Alderman O'Shea.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Brookins.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Tabarez.
Present.
Alderman Scott.
Present.
Alderman Sichio Lopez.
Present.
Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett.
Present.
Alderman Irvin.
Present.
Alderman Talafaro.
First of all, you came down to sit.
Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Reboyas.
Alderman Talafaro is present.
Alderman Talafaro is present. Alderman Reboyas.
Present, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cardona.
Present.
Alderman Wagispack.
Present.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Present.
Alderman Austin.
Here.
Alderman Ramirez.
Present.
Alderman Viegas.
Present.
Alderman Mits.
Present.
Alderman Esposito.
Esposito is here.
Alderman Newchen. Alderman Vasquez.
Present.
Alderman DiPaolo.
Present.
Alderman Riley.
Present.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Tunny.
Present.
Alderman Gardner.
Present.
Alderman Kappelman.
Present.
Alderman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Osterman.
Present.
Alderman Hadden.
Present.
Alderman Silverstein.
Present.
Alderman Maldonado, just checking in one last time, and Alderman Nugent. Anyone else not hear their name called?
I think Alderman Nugent is muted. I see her on the Zoom.
Madam Clerk, Alderman Nugent did.
Alderman Nugent is present. Alderman Nugent is present. Any other aldermen? All right, Your Honor, we have a quorum present.
And how many members, Madam Clerk?
Peter.
Your Honor, we have 49 members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are 49 members present. We have a quorum. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ladies and gentlemen, join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And bless America.
And the invocation will be delivered by Pastor Jaro Medina of the New Life Covenant Church. And ladies and gentlemen, we just received a word this morning that former alderman Jesse Evans has passed away. Please also remember him in your prayers. Pastor Medina.
Yes. Good morning, Honorable Mayor Lightfoot, members of the Chicago City Council, city staff and guests on behalf of New Life Covenant Ministry in Chicago. My name is Jerickson Medina, and I am the Spanish Campus Pastor in honor. It is my honor and privilege to give the invocation this morning. Thank you, City Clerk Valencia and Mayor Lightfoot, for this opportunity to pray for this body in our beloved city of Chicago. Let us bow our head and pray. Father, we thank you today. We come in with a spirit of gratitude because now more than ever, we are thankful for life. Today more than ever, we appreciate life more than ever. We appreciate the oxygen that we breathe. We appreciate our loved ones. And even though right now, Lord, there are many people mourning, as the mayor has mentioned, Lord, we just pray that you counsel them, comfort their family. But Lord, if something good is going to come out of this year, is that is going to put the right perspective, is going to put in perspective what is important and what is not important. So many hours that we stay behind in our offices working and neglecting our family. It is just going to give us the right perspective in life, family time, loved ones, spending more time with our neighbors, checking up on each other, Lord. Lord, meanwhile, we still in this year and in these waters that we're navigating called COVID-19. We pray, Lord, and I pray that you give our city leaders the wisdom to navigate these waters, give them wisdom to make the right decision. Lord, we know that leadership in uncertain times is not about vision, is about adaptation. So, Lord, we pray. I pray for the mayor, I pray for the city council, I pray for the city staff, that you give them the ability to adapt and to make the right changes, even though sometimes there have to be tough changes and decisions to be made. While we as citizens, Lord, we also pray that we can adapt. Because while vision is about casting, adapting is about discovering, help us together to discover a safety, healthy, and a better future, not only for us, but for the generations to come. We pray, Lord, in the name of our beautiful Lord Jesus Christ. Amen and amen.
Amen. Nice job, Pastor.
Thank you, Pastor, for those very timely and inspiring words. Ladies and gentlemen, we will begin the public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. The first speaker is Mr. Bob Ritter.
Am I good to go?
Yes, you are, sir.
All right, thank you. Good morning. My name is Bob Ritter, and I am President of the Chicago Federation of Labor. On behalf of CFL's 300 affiliate unions and their half a million members, we urge the city council to approve this budget and continue to move this city forward. From 911 operators to public health experts, to streets and sanitation employees, City of Chicago workers have been absolutely heroic during this crisis. We owe all of these brave workers a debt of gratitude that we may never pay back. City employees have sacrificed for months, and without these workers, Chicago falls apart, period. We understand that Chicago is facing an unprecedented budgetary challenge on top of the ongoing public health crisis. Throughout, we have approached this budget in a collaborative way. We have not thrown bombs. Instead, what we did was what we always do, we got to work. We talked to our frontline members that know this city best to generate solutions. Because of that collaborative process, we were able to find savings in the budget that averts layoffs of 350 city employees in 2021. That means 350 workers will have healthcare next year, 350 workers can continue to spend money at local small businesses, 350 workers that will continue to deliver the vital services Chicagoans need. This pandemic budget is not easy, but nothing is easy right now. What this budget does is protect our services and protect our workers while making the tough choices necessary to stabilize our city's finances. I'll say it again, to be crystal clear, this budget saves jobs and it saves services. Some organizations are advocating against this budget. We welcome their input. We've been fighting for the working class of this town for 125 years, and we will continue that fight for the next 125 years. And I get my strength from John Fitzpatrick, a progressive leader in our organization from over 100 years ago, who fought for working people, particularly women and people of color. And we hope that you will fight alongside us. We know this is a tough vote for the city council, but this is a tough time. And when times get tough in this city, our workers certainly don't shy away. They strap their boots on, walk into work, and they get the job done because that's what this city has always been about. For those of you planning to vote yes, thank you. I have a responsibility to the members of the unions I work on behalf of, city workers, but also the service and industrial unions who have suffered so much, and I don't take that responsibility lightly.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter, for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Mr. Alex Martinez. Mr. Alex Martinez, please press star six on your phone to unmute.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. My name is Alex Martinez. I'm a Hispanic immigrant living in the 16th Ward here with the Jewish Council on Urban Affairs, and I'm very excited about moving GAPA forward. Having worked for Chicago's Housing Police Department for four years as assistant to the Quartermaster, and then in communications where I also worked directly with other law enforcement agencies, including the Chicago Police Department, I have seen firsthand the blatant use of unnecessary force by police. One incident that I will never forget is seeing an officer punch and slap a detainee who was sitting down and already in handcuffs. The officer gave me a dirty look, as if to say, mind your own business. The lack of accountability in law enforcement always leads to abuse. Presently, this has been the norm in Chicago, and 40% of our city budget goes toward inadvertently supporting this type of police misconduct. And yet, there is no meaningful structure in place for the community to have a say-so in anything that concerns the people. This is unacceptable. As long as we have a police force and the people themselves are funding it, people should have a say-so as to how their money is being spent. GAPA's Community Commission is not the end-all-be-all. We need to be moving money out of the department and into other departments such as mental health, schools, and housing for the homeless. High-tech weapons, armored vehicles, surveillance cameras are not the answer to injustice, nor is banning public speech. Mayor's Lightfoot's dictatorial response to the protests against police brutality and racism show how much Chicago needs GAPA and GAPA's Community Commission with a final say on policy. CPD has banned protests on Lightfoot's block and is still using illegal violent tactics such as against protesters such as Kathleen. All this proves that there is an unjust and dangerous distribution of power regarding public safety in Chicago. Spying on the social media accounts of protesters is not the answer either. More control needs to be in the hands of the community. Policy for these issues should be decided by the community. Alderman Talia Farrow, put GAPA to a vote in public safety now. And Mayor Lightfoot, I urge you to be the mayor you promised to be and pass GAPA now, and in so doing, be remembered as the mayor who had a backbone and kept her promises to Chicago. Thank you for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Our next speaker is Mr. Adib Kason. Mr. Kason, will you please press star six on your phone to unmute? Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Adib Kason. I am a member of the Chicago Democratic Socialists of America. We ask the city council to vote no on the mayor's proposed budget. We ask the city council to instead approve a budget that provides the community with its basic needs: land, bread, housing, healthcare, education, clothing, justice, and peace, and that significantly decreases the police budget. We want an immediate end to police brutality and the murder of Black people, Latino people, Indigenous people, and other people of color. We want freedom for the Black community, the Indigenous community, the Latino community, and other communities of color inside the United States and outside the United States. We want power to be given directly to communities of color to directly determine their own destiny. We want full employment for all people. We want an end to the robbery by the capitalists of communities of color. We want decent housing fit for the shelter of human beings. We want education that exposes the true nature of this decadent and genocidal American society. We want education that teaches us our true history and our role in the present-day society. We want all people of color to be exempt from military service. We want freedom for all people of color held in federal, state, country, and city prisons and jails. We want all people of color when brought to trial to be tried in court by a jury of their peer group or people from their own communities, as defined by the Constitution of the United States. We want land, bread, housing, healthcare, education, clothing, justice, and peace. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all people are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness.
Thank you, Mr. Kason, for your comments. Our next speaker is Ms. Helena Duncan.
Good morning. As a fifth ward resident, I was not surprised but disappointed to see my alderman Leslie Harrison flip-flop on her opposition to the property tax hike in this budget. Alderman Harrison stated less than a month ago that, quote, "Now is not the time to add more taxes," end quote, "It's $56 this year, then it'll double next year, and it'll keep going up." She claims that this is not what her constituents want. She's right about that. And yet, she voted in favor of the tax hike in the Finance Committee last week. The fact is, this budget is regressive and harmful. It is not a budget for the working class. The mayor has couched it in the language of it being a tough vote that just has to be taken, but in reality, it's lazy. They say it's the best we can do, but your constituents are not stupid. Alderman Harrison and the mayor and aldermen who intend to vote yes claim that other revenue sources have been exhausted, ignoring the progressive revenue proposals that have been sent to the Rural Committee to die. Your constituents will remember your vote on this when you're up for reelection, will remember that you voted to raise taxes during a pandemic hurting homeowners and renters alike, that you voted to preserve the outlandishly over-large budget of the Chicago Police Department after so much reckoning with the racist murder of George Floyd. We need money for mental health clinics and responders, for housing and healthcare, for treatment, not trauma. Vote no on this budget. We can do better. Progressive is not just a title that you crown yourself with, it's in the votes that you take. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan, for your comments. Our next speaker is Anika Tendaji.
Hi, thank you, City Council. My name is Anika Tendaji. I'm urging city council members to vote no on this budget. Regressive taxes, taxes on people who are already barely making it through this pandemic, like property tax, like speeding fines, increased speeding fines are not what the city needs. We also don't need the overblown budget that we spend on policing, use the summer to beat on young protesters, children pepper-spraying folks that resulted in massive lawsuits. What we need is less money for police who can't seem to follow the laws themselves, which is why we're under a consent decree, and more money for housing, more money for pandemic relief, more money for mental health, public mental health, and not the co-responder model. Vote no on this budget because it does not include treatment not trauma, because it doesn't include an Amazon tax, a tax on Amazon, and because it doesn't include sunsetting tips, it doesn't include enough of a reduction in spending on policing when we need services for folks in community who are barely making it through this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tendaji, for your comments. Our next speaker is Alyssa Adamson.
Good morning, City Council and Mayor Lightfoot. My name is Alyssa Adamson, and I'm a resident of the 28th Ward. I'm here today to urge aldermen, especially my own alderman Jason Irvin, to vote no on Lightfoot's proposed budget. Overall, the proposed budget is a budget of austerity. Lightfoot is proposing to balance the $1.1 billion deficit on the backs of poor and working-class Chicagoans instead of taxing wealthy corporations who are already exploiting our labor. She's proposing more speeding tickets given through cameras catching anyone going six miles per hour over the speed limit. This will only lead to more money in cars stolen from poor people who can't afford this, especially now during a time of mass unemployment and a global pandemic. Right now, we should be banning evictions, funding public health, forgiving all traffic tickets, forgiving utility debts, and moving money from funding the Chicago Police Department to funding our communities. There is no reason that CPD should be getting 39% of the corporate fund translating to over $1.5 billion, which reflects a relative 2% increase compared to 2020. There is no reason we should be holding open-vanquished CPD positions, something Lightfoot has set aside $76 million for. There's no reason that we should set aside $82 million for anticipated police misconduct settlements. We should not be living in a city where we budget for the brutalization and murder of Black, Brown, and Poor people. This is a historical moment where we can finally begin to address public safety concerns with solutions we know to work. For example, we should be supporting Alderwoman Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez's proposal for the Treatment Not Trauma Amendment that would take money from CPD and put it towards a 211 hotline connecting social workers with those having mental health crises. While many will reference the constant record-brading shootings and youth deaths, we cannot forget that the context for that increase is violence alongside 40 years of expanding funding for police and decreasing funding for communities. We know that violence and suffering is caused by poverty and poor living conditions, so why don't we put our collective funds towards building beautiful and accessible housing, towards free and quality healthcare, or towards making city colleges tuition-free for city residents? We can't let ourselves be bullied by the FOP or a mayor that will do whatever they want. As elected officials, you are bound to those who pay taxes for your salaries and who vote to elect you. Mayor Lightfoot has refused to listen to the 87% respondents to the Chicago Budget Survey who demanded defunding CPD. You, as aldermen, do not have to follow her lead. Today, I urge you to make history and listen to the people of Chicago by voting no on this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adamson, for your comments. Our next speaker is Brianna Serta.
I'm a resident of the 26th Ward. I am calling to urge Alderman Roberto Maldonado to vote no on the proposed budget because this budget does not defund CPD and invest in communities. I urge Alderman Maldonado to fiercely advocate for a budget that defunds CPD by closing the Home and Square, an infamous CPD site, and implement robustly-funded, non-police, mental health crisis response systems. Since 2015, nearly a quarter of all people killed by police officers in America have a known mental illness. In a study last year in the Journal of American Academy of Psychiatry and the Law concluded that police crisis intervention teams have only modestly helped reduce arrests of people with mental illness. The author of that study, Dr. Renee Bender, says the results concluded that police crisis intervention teams have failed their fundamental goal of de-escalating and reducing violence to citizens and police alike. The results have also shown that there is no consistent reduction in the risk of mortality or death during emergency police interactions. The mayor's concession on the Treatment Not Trauma Amendment aren't enough. $1 million for crisis intervention is an offensively small amount that should be increased to the recommended amount of $5 million. We don't need a pilot police-led model that has shown to be unsuccessful and ineffective. We need an increased long-term funding that comes from the CPD budget for a crisis pilot that includes a model of trained health professionals and not police, especially as mental health concerns continue to rise during this pandemic. I hope Alderman Maldonado will stand with the 87% of the City of Chicago who responded to the budget survey that reported it is vital to defund CPD and invest in communities by including ordinances into this bill such as the Amazon Tax Ordinance, the TIF Sunset Ordinance, not raising property taxes, not raising gas prices on our citizens, or ticketing Chicagoans for going just six miles over the speed limit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Serta, for your comments. Our next speaker is Mr. Don Velar. Mr. Don Velar is not here. Our next speaker is Reverend Maggie Shreve.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot, City of Chicago's staff and alderperson. My name is Maggie Shreve, and I'm an ordained pastor in the Presbyterian Church USA. I currently serve as a volunteer parish associate for jail ministry with my own church, and I'm working with several interfaith groups concerned with carceral justice and police accountability. I come before you today to express my support for the Grassroots Alliance for Police Accountability, or GAPA, proposed ordinance. Chicago needs an empowered, citizen-driven, and supported policymaking body to set the tone and direction of our police department. While this body would certainly work with the mayor, her staff, the chief of police, Chicago Police Department, and other stakeholders, I believe it is essential to the future of justice in our city that citizens be in charge of policies that guide our police. Since the consent decree, the Community Renewal Society, and numerous other groups have been working hard on proposals to increase citizen involvement. I am a member of the CRS Police Issues Team, and we have a proposed ordinance under your consideration in the Public Safety Committee. We've run into a roadblock where the mayor is suggesting revisions to the proposed ordinance and has stopped working with us. If the mayor's office has veto power over this proposed Citizens Commission, then we, as citizens, would not be responsible and accountable to the greater community. I'm opposed to any other changes that would diminish the power and authority of this commission. Mayor Lightfoot, you campaigned and supported such a commission, and we're terribly disappointed that your position seems to have changed. As the protests for racial justice this summer have demonstrated to us once again, we need to get back on track with this work. From Theodore Parker to Rabbi Jacob Cohen to the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., we know that the arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice. In addition to my ministry work, a major portion of my working life has been devoted to organization development in the nonprofit world. Like any nonprofit in this country, a board of directors leads and guides the organization in fulfillment of its mission, setting of strategy, policies, and evaluating the organization and evaluating the organization's successes and failures. Most of these boards are representative of the organizations they govern and the people they serve. Just as our school councils were originally intended, the active involvement of parents, teachers, students, and people living in a community served by a school have an enormous stake in how well that school educates its students. The same should be true of this Citizens Council regarding police policies for the city of Chicago. I believe in a fully engaged and highly participatory form of democracy. I know we can build that here in the city of Chicago. Please support the GAAPA ordinance, and let's get this reform back on track. Thank you for your time and attention today, and I look forward to your progressive action soon, and may God bless you all.
Thank you, Reverend Shreve, for your comments. Our next speaker is Ms. Mary Broderick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Mary Broderick, and I'm a lifelong Chicagoan and a resident of the 41st Ward. I disagree with the proposed budget for 2021 and hope each of you vote against it. First, the proposed budget includes a property tax increase. At the same time, residents of Chicago's like me, who have been out of work due to the lockdowns and travel bans in 2021, in 2020, you, as a government, are severely limiting many Chicagoans' ability to make a living, and now you're adding to the anxiety by adding more taxes. It is not responsible for the City Council or mayor to further burden residents with an increase in property taxes while at the same time restricting our ability to work. The budget not only raises taxes this year, but includes a yearly property tax increases that prevents any hope of the City Council being responsible for budgets in the future. The budget also includes the elimination of 600 positions to the Chicago Police Department. This cut is also not responsible. The bogus Chicago Budget Survey posted on the city website lacks data integrity and should be removed. That survey was widely circulated in the "defund the police" groups across the country and beyond. It is irresponsible to present that data as the opinion of the residents of Chicago. Responsible members of City Council should look at other cities that jumped on the "defund the police" bandwagon, like Minneapolis, who are already pouring more money, not less, into policing. Demonizing the police and encouraging criminal behavior is wrong. Over time, defunding the police will cost the city more, not only in dollars but in lost lives. Murders in Chicago this year are already up to 715 people, compared with 474 at the same time last year. So far this year, 103 children and teens have been killed on the streets of Chicago, with another 538 shot and wounded in Chicago. Compare that to the two children who have died from COVID-19 in Chicago this year. Every life lost is a tragedy, but in Chicago, we need to balance the risk of COVID against the risk of our children being out of school for eight months running. As private and parochial schools went into classrooms safely this year, CTU fought to keep the schools closed, saying they're concerned about child safety. I find their statements to be dishonest and self-serving. Instead of fighting the city to keep schools closed, CTU should have come up with a plan to get the schools open.
Ms. Broderick, thank you for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Ms. Valerie Burns.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi. Okay. My name is Mel Burns. I'm a resident in the 1st Ward. 2020 has been an especially difficult year for most, and I personally have experienced losing my job, my health insurance, and to top it off, I was brutalized and unjustly arrested by the Chicago Police while attending the May 30 protest with medical supplies. But I experience hardly compares to the trauma Black and Brown citizens in this city have and continue to endure at the hands of CPD. That is why I was so thrilled that a budget survey was being offered to us to give us our input and insight and address that over $4.3 million per day in taxpayer dollars goes to an institution with a racist, violent history and presence. I was even more excited to see that 87% of the budget takers or nearly 33,000 Chicagoans agreed. Money needed to be reallocated from the Police Department to other underfunded departments across the city, but you didn't listen to us, or you didn't seem to care. What's the point of giving us a platform to speak and then ignoring our voices? Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez's proposed Treatment Not Trauma Amendment, calling for $5 million to be reallocated from CPD's operating budget and instead spent on a non-law enforcement first responder model for mental health crises, has been neglected by this administration's budget. This is less than just two days of what the police budget currently costs us. Lightfoot would offer us only $2 million, allowing the program to exist with under half the budget it would need to operate efficiently. Make it make sense. Currently, the Cook County Jail is the largest provider of mental health services in both Chicago and Cook County. This is unconscionable for a city that had 19 public mental health clinics in 2008 and has lost 14 of those in the years since. In 2012, 23 Aldermen that still sit on this council were complicit in closing six of them. Shame on you, Aldermen. If you continue to refuse the progressive solutions to the growing list of problems that you've made for our city, then the choice before you is clear. It is time to resign. Instead of taxing and binding the working class through increased property taxes and asinine speed limit fines to solve the budget shortfall, especially in a time when we have experienced one of the most deadly economic crashes in history, when folks aren't sure how they're going to pay their rent and fear eviction, we could turn to the corporations that feed off our city and our people for their businesses to thrive. The Amazon tax proposal alone could bring in $5.8 billion annually and not at the expense of the people. Alderpeople, I am pleading with you to do the right thing today, follow in the footsteps of your cohorts like Alderman Laspada and Alderman Ramirez Rosa, and listen to your constituents who are the most heavily affected by this proposal. And I'd just like to end with quoting one of my favorite moments from Lightfoot this year. We can absolutely not let her prevail, and I will quote what I really want to say. It's two words. It begins with F and ends with U. I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Burns, for your comments. Our next speaker is Ms. Lucretia Burtz.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Greetings, Madam Mayor and City Council of Chicago. Again, my name is Lucretia Burtz, and I am one of the co-chairs of the Black Remembrance Project. As a community center organizer, I stand in solidarity with the demands to defund the police and reinvest in our city's Black and marginalized communities. I also support requests from groups like the People's Response Network, who have been specifically asking for deeper investment of the city's public health response through expansion of flu vaccinations and other health interventions. I hope the council hears the requests of the most impacted communities and reconsider the proposed allotments in the budget. However, today, my organization would like to speak to the Observance Day legislation for Juneteenth, which is a special item on the non-revenue portion of today's agenda. It's been a little over a year since Alderwoman Maria Haddon and her office turned our organization's request to make Juneteenth an official holiday into legislation. That legislation was put onto your desk and figuratively into your hands. We thank Alderwoman Maria Haddon and her leadership on this legislation. We also thank Alderman David Moore for being the first co-sponsor, and we also thank all of the 41 Aldermen who signed on. We hope today the legislation to make Juneteenth an Observance Day passes unanimously. Although we will continue to ensure that Juneteenth receives the full holiday status that it deserves, meaning paid time off, just as other holidays do, we see the Observance Day as a well-deserved victory and a historic step in the right direction. I hope you pass this non-revenue portion of the budget and work with the Black Remembrance Project, as well as other organizations who we have formed a coalition with, to plan Juneteenth in 2021. And I'd like to end this portion of my comment with a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King, which deals with time. And he says, "Time itself is neutral. It can be used either destructively or constructively. More and more, I feel that people of ill will have used time much more effectively than the people of goodwill. We have to repent in this generation, not merely for the hateful words and actions of bad people, but for the appalling silence of good people. Human progress never rolls in on wills or inevitability. It comes through the tireless efforts of men willing to work to be coworkers with God. And without this hard work, time itself becomes an ally of the forces of social stagnation. We use time creatively, we must use time creatively in the knowledge that time is always right to do right. We hope that the City Council of Chicago..." I'm sorry, end quote. "We hope that the City Council of Chicago takes this time to do what is right."
Thank you, Ms. Burtz, for your comments. However, your time has expired. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This concludes the public comment period. We will now move to communications. Madam Clerk.
A series of communications from her Honorable the Mayor to the Honorable City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Chief Financial Officer, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the Department of Water Management to enter into a preliminary water supply agreement with the City of Juliette. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance, we appreciate it. We are truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Chicago Board of Education, I transmit here with, together with Alderman Scott, an ordinance providing for waivers for the Chicago Board of Education. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of agreement with the Chicago Cubs Baseball Club LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of various temporary relief measures to businesses. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Communications from the City Clerk. I, City Clerk Valencia, inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on November 23, 2020, and which required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on November 24, 2020 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings for the City Council of the City of Chicago. I also transmit here with various claims against the City of Chicago which refer to the Committee on Finance. Your Honor, that concludes my oral and clerk's communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We now move to the budget.
Madam President.
Chair recognizes Chairman Dow.
Madam President, at this time, I move to suspend the rules to consider various items of unfinished business, which were noticed and filed with the clerk pursuant to Rule 41, pertinent to consideration and passage of the 2021 budget. They are as follows. Number one, the 2021 Code Corrections Ordinance, the 2021 Salary Resolution, the 2021 Motor Fuel Tax Allocation, the 2021 Motor Fuel Tax Allocation Intergovernmental Agreement with the Chicago Transit Authority and Cook County, the 2021 Management Ordinance, a series of amendments to the 2021 Budget Recommendations, the 2021 Annual Appropriations... A series of amendments to the...
Hold on one second, Chairman Dow. Folks, can you please keep your phones muted until you are speaking? Please proceed, Chairman Dow.
A series of amendments to the 2021 Budget Recommendations, the 2021 Annual Appropriation Ordinance as amended, the 2021 Tax Levy Ordinance, the 2021 Revenue Ordinance, and the General Obligation Bonds and Additional Sales Tax Bonds Ordinance.
The chair recognizes Alderman David Moore. Are you speaking to the motion to suspend the rules, or do you want to talk on another issue, Alderman Moore? Alderman Moore, you're muted. Sir, you remain muted.
Yes, before we vote on it, I can speak then, but if you want to continue, she can continue.
Okay. Hearing no objection, so ordered regarding the motion to suspend the rules. Chairman Dow, back to you.
Yes, Madam President. I ask that the council discuss at this time the entire budget package, which consists of the various matters I just identified. I reserve my right and Alderman Waggett's back's right to close the discussion.
Thank you, Chairman Dow. The chair recognizes... I'm sorry. Chairman Dow, do you wish to begin a discussion on the budget package?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to first start by sincerely thanking each and every one of my colleagues here in the City Council for your thoughtful participation in this year's budget process. Through the many long hours and late nights in committee, all of your commitment to the city of Chicago could not be more clear. I look forward to seeing all of you in person for hearings, hopefully in the near future, because like Alderman Jeanette Taylor said during the budget hearings, I'm zoomed out. Nothing about this year has been easy. As Reverend Medina said this morning, these times are about adaptation. The city budget is no exception. But what we have seen, without a doubt, is that a strong and committed government like the one I am so proud to be a part of here in Chicago can have an important and positive role in people's lives. This budget upholds the commitment to the public good by providing the support and services Chicagoans need during this difficult time. No one wakes up in the morning wanting to raise taxes, especially its families across the city are struggling to stay healthy and financially solvent. But unprecedented time calls for tough decisions to be made. Faced with cutting essential workers or essential services to the most vulnerable during a worldwide pandemic versus a modest tax, property tax increase, the choice is clear. Together, we have to sacrifice to protect those most in need. That is what this budget does. Despite the pandemic's devastating effect on city revenue collection, this budget not only protects, but also allocates additional funding to such critical services, such as homelessness prevention and outreach, mental health services, violence prevention, a public safety co-responder model, workforce training, economic development, affordable housing, and so much more. So I ask you, please join me in supporting the 2021 City of Chicago budget. Now, this is far from an ideal year. Don't let a far-from-ideal budget obscure the fact that right now, right now, this proposal is the best of our very limited options for Chicago. Being an elected official means compromising in order to do what is right for all of those involved, and this includes voting yes to support this budget. I'd like to thank Budget Director Susie Park and CFO Jenny Bennett for their countless hours that they have spent away from their families during a pandemic to craft and present this budget. I want to thank Controller Reshna Soni, Carrie Anne Corrales, Paul Moody, Jerel Dawson, Lucia, Manny Perez, Jeff Levine, Alexis Long, all the departmental commissioners, and the numerous other staff members who have contributed to this future of our city through the 2021 budget process. I also want to thank the Budget Committee staff, Renee Barrera, James Mendez, and Brian Freeman for your hard work. And finally, I want to thank you, Mayor Lightfoot, for all you have done to guide our city through this truly unprecedented time. This budget doesn't end here. We will all continue to work together for the good of all Chicagoans, the backbone of our great city. So please join me and vote yes on the 2021 budget today. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Dow. Ladies and gentlemen, if you wish to speak on the budget package as a whole, as Chairman Dow has indicated, please make sure that you raise your hand, use the raise-your-hand function. And at this time, the chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, and Chairman Dow gave a lot of thank yous, and I won't go through all of those, but I will say a big thank you to Chairman Dow in the way she led this budget and this budget. But I will say a big thank you to Chairman Dow and the way she led this budget and this budget discussion for us and getting us the information that we needed, as well as the Budget Director, Susie Park, and Controller Jenny Bennett. And Rashni was all them involved in this. Mayor, your team for being transparent was the most important thing to me. And not only transparent, but getting us the information that we needed in a timely fashion so that we can make a sound decision. With that said, for me, this is not an ideal budget. But this is a good budget to pass. Because everyone, including this administration, do not like this budget. We all had to give a little and get a little in order to get where we are today. I don't like it because I believe we should have had a higher tax increase. I said it under the previous administration, and I'm saying it here. To me, people just want to know where they stand without constant increases so they can have stability and consistency in their lives. And they want to make sure that they are provided with good services that reflect those increases. However, tying CPI to the property taxes is a step in the right direction. And this administration is working toward that stability. I am not happy with lowering the speed, as I've always felt that speed cameras are a trap. And we should have placed, we should be able to place electronic speed display monitors at every speeding camera. Then you say, David, then why are you voting for it? Because I told you at the start, everybody had to give a little and get a little. At the beginning, no one, and especially my residents, wanted a garbage fee increase. Those things were on the table. And so when I talked to my residents, they would rather not have that. And that's something that can be, that is out of their control from the day-to-day basis. But what they can control in this type of climate is how fast they drive. And so they had an option as we're dealing with this tough budget. One of the things that they was concerned about as well was the double dipping. And they saying, why am I paying, would I have to pay more in garbage fee when I'm paying that in taxes? And so as we fought, that was taken out. So again, we had to give a little and get a little. I was watching Chicago Tonight a few days ago, and Jeffrey Baer had a special on there, "Chicago from the Air." I thought I was just going to watch a fun show. But what it did was taught me a lesson and gave me a reminder about discrimination and about voices being left out. He talked about Indian Boundary Park and Rogers Park. It is called Indian Boundary because when the white settlers moved in, the Indians who found the land were not allowed to cross that boundary and live. You asked, David, what does this have to do with the budget? A lot. As we create a new Committee on Immigrants and Refugee Rights, which encompasses people from Mexico, the Africa diaspora, the Caribbean, including Haiti, where the founder of our city is from, Jean Baptiste Point du Sabo, who settled here and set up a trading post, which is the foundation for what Chicago is today as a world-class business city. So as we have this committee, the children of Jean Baptiste Point du Sabo, voices have to be heard. Their voices have to be heard and respected. We cannot accuse President Trump of voter suppression out there when we practice voter suppression sometimes here in the Council. I want to allow those organizations and voices to be heard to bring the du sabo vote to a council in December. And trust me, I'm no longer asking right now. When we suppress votes, we get civil unrest. We want to avoid civil unrest, and in my case, being uncivil. So one of the things I have to ask myself for this budget and why I'm voting for it, because the question is real, what is in it for the black people? We have to ask that. And I ask it in a lens that when black people win, everybody wins. But that doesn't happen with every other ethnicity. But in this budget, what's in it bad for the black people? An additional $10 million in violence prevention, which pushes it up to $36 million. I know what you see on TV sometimes, but a lot of times what you don't see on TV, the work that the mayor, the money she's put in here that have saved many lives. Another $1 million to support alternative responders, parent officers with mental health professionals. That's on top of the $9 million from last year and the $10 million from the CARES Act. We're talking $20 million toward mental health. And $11 million in workforce services. $38 million for youth programming. I know that's much needed in my community. And $6 million for economic recovery efforts and for small businesses. And that's not even including what this administration is doing for Invest Southwest, which we're seeing positive results from already. There's over $100 million in investments that we're putting in to our communities that help the black community, which overall helps the City of Chicago. So yes, it is a tough budget for many. But it becomes an easy budget for me when I look at it as a whole to see what we're, when we're dealing with such a pandemic right now. So I'm in support of this budget, and I hope my colleagues heard the things I say, have looked at this budget, and they'll vote yes for this budget as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to support the budget. And I thought about it. Mayor, I've always tried to work with the administration, not always agreeing, and yes, we have had some disagreements. But let me just thank your administration and thank our Chairman Dow for her hard work. Now we know how some of our children feel sitting at the Zooms all day long. Gets to be a little tough, but she made it through, and that's through the determination. This has been a very difficult 2020. For everyone and anyone you know, the unknown. But what we know is today, we're voting on a budget that's going to have some meat for everyone. There is opportunities for us to be able to do capital improvement, mental health, violent preventions. As Alderman Moore and Chairman Dow have already stated, all of the programs that are there. There are some things that we don't like, and I have never known that you like everything anyway. All my life, there have been some things I don't like. Things I don't like today, there will be some I don't like tomorrow. But to come to a common ground where you can see progress rather than digress is very important in these days and times. I don't know how in my right mind, my understanding of my community, to say that I won't. Because I know can come before cannot. I've always says, I can. President Barack Obama, yes, I can. And today, I'm saying, yes, we can do this. Yes, stand much more stronger than no, because you don't get nothing but a no. If you say yes, you may be able to get some things moving. So today, I am pleased to stand in support of the budget, as many have worked very hard. I have to thank Chairman Irvin, because he kept the Black Caucus on point every step of the way to make sure that we were all together. So I want to thank you, Mayor, for your leadership, your team, Jerel, the citizens, Manny, Susie, Sue Parks, Jenny. They would get the information to us. If you call them, they'll call us back. But I think I'm glad today, hopefully, I don't have to get all the weekend calls, all during the night calls from the administration, because they really worked us. And it was like we never had a day off. So I know the work has been put in, in this budget, even during a time of the unknown. We stayed with it, and we're still going to stand because we love our community, we love Chicago that much. To make it happen, as a council, I want to thank my colleagues for all their leadership, their advice, expertise. I don't want to leave out my Commissioner from BCAP and her department, Rosa Estamia. Her department was outstanding in trying to make sure the small businesses are getting the thing they need and stand on me. It's a lot of work, but that's the job we undertook, that's the job I signed up for, that's the job I'm going to do, and that's the job I'll continue to do. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Mitz. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Sidloski Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. I too, today, want to speak in support of this budget. And I'd like to take a moment to talk about this budget process and how it was different from any other budget process that I've been part of. This process was truly collaborative and transparent. It included the Progressive Caucus, the Latino Caucus, and the Black Caucus, as well as individual Aldermen to have a seat at the table. And I want to thank Chairman Dow for an amazing job. I know it's, I know that it's also frustrating, it was also frustrating and messy at times. But a truly democratic, inclusive process is messy. It's emotional, and it's stressful. But the end product of the process like this is a budget that reflects the priorities and values of our communities. And that should always be our goal. This budget, when it was first introduced, included 350 layoffs. For me, that was a line in the sand that I would never cross. I've been fighting for working-class people my whole life, and I wasn't about to stop doing that now. I'm grateful that the mayor's team listened to and worked through the concerns of folks like me and all of our brothers and sisters in organized labor. Together, we found a way to avert those layoffs, and we avoided putting hundreds of our critical workers on the street in the middle of the worst economic crisis of our lives. This budget puts an additional $10 million toward community-based violence prevention. This brings the total violence prevention in 2021 to $36 million. And when we talk about violence prevention, we must talk about our returning residents returning home from incarceration. This budget recognizes that by investing $11 million in workforce services through the Department of Family and Support Services, targeting returning citizens, immigrants, veterans, and persons with disabilities, we are prioritizing their needs. This budget also includes $38 million for youth programming, something that I hold near and dear to my heart. This budget also includes a capital plan to put thousands of Chicagoans back to work. We need to fix our crumbling infrastructure, and no one knows that better than the Tenth Ward. Our bridges are always breaking and out of commission. And I'm really glad that the mayor was willing to listen and compromise when it came to the concerns of some of my fellow Progressive Caucus members with respect to the proposed mental health co-responder pilot model. I want to thank Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez, Alderwoman Maria Haddon, Alderwoman Leslie Harrison, and Chairman Sophia King for holding the line. It is an important step forward that this budget now includes a single responder model, so we can begin to send mental health practitioners to respond to some emergencies instead of CPD. And begin to send mental health, and, I'm sorry, and while we hope to find more money for this effort, I'm pleased that the mayor's team has agreed to increase funding allocated for this pilot. This is a show of good faith and a recognition of the concerns voiced by many members of our communities. And it's a start. I want to say one more thing to my fellow progressive colleagues who are voting yes on this. I know this was a particularly hard decision for you. And I know some in our advocacy communities have voiced their disappointment. And I know, I know how hard that can be. Sometimes leadership means letting your principles guide you to finding solutions through collaboration, to doing what you believe is right, even when it's hard, even when it feels unpopular, even when some of our own friends are mad at you. I appreciate and respect all your work and your ability to push this budget to be better for working families throughout the City of Chicago. Thank you for everyone, to everyone for your collaboration on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Garza. The Chair recognizes Alderman Siccho Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the past several weeks, we heard a public relations campaign from this administration about the budget that we're voting on today. It's a budget that is rooted in regressive taxation. The mayor has said that her administration exhausted every option available before deciding to balance her budget on the backs of homeowners by increasing property taxes. And let's be real, this puts an even greater burden on the black and brown homeowners that I represent. The 25th War ranks third for the highest property tax increases with this budget, far outpacing any kind of increase in wages that could possibly help homeowners in my ward pay their new, bigger property tax bills. I want my colleagues to remember, all that's been put forward in place of the property tax increase that we're voting on in today's budget. There were plenty of solutions put forward that would have helped us increase funding for violence prevention, for example. We put forward solutions that would have increased the mental health services by five times the very modest $1 million increase in this proposed budget. Let's put that into perspective. The mayor's giving a bigger increase to her own budget office than she's given to the entire city's mental health services budget. Have we really exhausted all options? This budget invested even more money into police misconduct settlements. The people of Chicago would rather have seen the Chicago Coalition for the Homeless proposal for $12 million funded to create 500 units of supportive housing. They would rather have seen us pass Just Cause for Eviction, which would have knocked us to our budget and limited the rate of eviction in our city, keeping families in their homes. They would rather invest in violence prevention to actually effectively lower the gun violence rate in our city next year. Imagine that. Instead, we'll have more violence, more austerity, and more unaccountable reactive police repression in black and brown communities. There was plenty the mayor could have done before deciding to increase property taxes on homeowners. The mayor refused to deep into the city's reserves because she said that she's worried that it will impact how bankers decide on their bond rating. So instead, she decided to go with the same kick the can down the road, decisions as mayor daily, but continued to borrow. This helps banks actually make money of us in the short term, and it will, it will still ultimately impact our bond rating when repeatedly we fail to pay up. I don't know about the rest of you, but I believe in the midst of a pandemic, we should be focusing on saving lives and supporting social services rather than using the suffering of our people to ingratiate ourselves to create rating agencies. We put forward an Amazon tax that will generate a new revenue for this budget. This is a company that is doing well and pays zero corporate head tax. Instead of considering one progressive revenue idea, the mayor swiftly put our Amazon tax proposal in the Rules Committee to die. What are the hardest-working people of Chicago sacrificing next year so that this mayor can stand on the side of tax-judging corporate America? We could have explored reallocating the $1.8 billion in TIF surplus that currently subsidizes luxury developers in non-blighted areas like the Loop. If that's in fact the dollar amount that is in there, hard to say because no one from the administration can bring in the light on our TIF surplus and how that looks like. I don't know about the rest of you, but I'd rather stand on the side of the people than on the side of luxury developers. I've seen what happens when our elected leaders use intimidation against the vulnerable instead of using their office to uplift the people they represent. But this continues to be the approach we see from the mayor. Yesterday, we had a Yesterday, we, we had a thirteen-year-old Kathleen Sabato testifying to the needs of our youth, of our city. Are we capable of hearing her words? What are we doing when we were thirteen years old? Good kids, Matt City has courageously, courageously fought for years to fund their peace book ordinance, which will redirect two percent of the city's police budget to instead fund programs that actually prevent violence in their communities. This should be our priority, not banks and billionaire campaign donors. That's a strong budget, a budget that stands up to the powerful, to lift up our most treacherous and most vulnerable. I don't cast my vote against this budget to spite you, Mayor. I cast my vote against this budget in spite of your threats and in support of the people we were elected to serve. And so while I vote no today, please be assured that I will continue working with community organizations, listening to people I represent and putting forward progressive solutions over the next twelve months so that we can come out with a two thousand and twenty-two budget that is rooted in economic and social justice. A budget that hopefully doesn't need a public relations campaign to distract from more regressive taxes. A budget that does less for corporate America, Wall Street banks and luxury developers and does more for people, the people of Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Siccho Lopez. The chair recognizes Alderman Maria Haddon.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, also want to say thank you to Chairman Dow. So first, I want to take a moment to celebrate some of the achievements in this budget. While it falls short in many ways, please know that some of us listen to movement leaders and our residents to create opportunities for the change that we need, especially in this time of crisis. The progressive black and Latino caucuses came together in an unprecedented way on a number of issues and together fought for increased funding for some of our key priorities. These included violence prevention, removing the welcoming city ordinance carve-outs, preserving city jobs and the creation of a non-law enforcement mental health crisis response pilot. This budget also preserves investments we saw last year in housing and mental health services. Make no mistake, these gains would not have been won without coalition building and a significant push. But I also want to be clear that this budget is not a reflection of what Chicagoans need and deserve. This is not a people's budget. And the process we followed is not one that faithfully incorporated the input of the people of this city. I won't pretend this budget reflects the values that our administration and city council claims to hold. I'm voting I because that was the cost of a non-law enforcement mental health response model being included in the pilot for this year. Movement leaders have led on treatment, not trauma, and I believe that this opens a pathway, a necessary pathway for progress to them. Many of my residents have expressed disappointment and anger towards this budget. I stand by my decision because I know that I'll keep fighting for the bigger structural changes we must see, but couldn't achieve this time. But I do feel it's my duty to share the views of forty-ninth ward residents, many of whom are outraged to see another budget presented to them that is so out of line with our values and out of sync with our needs. Madam President, my esteemed colleagues, our residents don't trust us. They hear us say one thing and they watch us do another. To paraphrase Congresswoman Shirley Chisholm, "We proclaim ideals that are the reverse of our actions." She said that such hypocrisy is the real barrier between us and our young people. Truer words have never been spoken. The answer to civil unrest and protests taking over downtown isn't more police. It's divesting from programs and departments that contribute to the systems of oppression and investing in services and programs that the science and the data say will better serve our residents. It's doing everything in our power to create a budget that best serves the residents of our city, especially those residents who have been ignored, discounted, abused and neglected. It's not simple, but it's the task to which any elected official in this city who claims to love it should devote themselves. I thank you for the floor, Madam President.
Chair calls on Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Ma, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have always said that I can't vote for a property tax increase um, as a sitting alderman. Only because I represent the twenty-sixth ward, which is one of the um wards in the city of Chicago that are under severe pressure of gentrification. And therefore, I have witnessed thousands of families, of working families, displaced and therefore gentrified from the twenty-sixth ward in the last ten years at least, but it's been longer than that. One reason is they continue escalating property taxes among other things and other factors. And this hit very close to home. My mother-in-law, a senior citizen who applied for her tax freeze, she leaves three homes north of our home. Her property taxes after a tax increase, a tax freeze, is twelve thousand dollars a year. She's being forced to sell the home right now because she no longer afford to live in this community, her community that she has lived here for more than forty years, any longer. The Cook County Treasurer recently released a study and show how property taxes have increased by ward during the last twenty years. The twenty-sixth ward saw an increase of two hundred and thirty-four percent. Imagine this, two hundred and thirty-four percent. And guess what? Last year, the residents of Humboldt Park were slapped and the homeowners of Humboldt Park were slapped by the assessor with a reassessment increase of eighty-four percent. The highest percentage increase among all of the communities in the city of Chicago. So I ask myself, what is the point of keep pushing the inventory of affordable housing units in the twenty-sixth ward? If, and if at the end of the day, I'm gonna end up with a net loss rather than a net gain of bringing affordable and decent homes and for working families in my ward? At this pace, I cannot win this war. If I bring five hundred new affordable housing units into, into the twenty-sixth ward and I lose eight hundred families because they can no longer afford to live in this ward because of the increasing of a property tax that they are experiencing, I will end up with a negative net loss of three hundred working families. Is that fair? I don't think so, and I don't think it's fair. And I know that the property taxes are going to be used to pay for, to reduce the debt that exists on the pension for our workers in the city of Chicago. Guess what? Those workers also own homes. If they no longer can afford their property taxes as homeowners in the city of Chicago, we're gonna lose those workers out and from the city of Chicago. And therefore, what they're paying for is not gonna benefit them neither. So in good conscience, I just cannot vote for this property tax increase and even less with an automatic annual increase based upon the C P I on the back of our working families. And so therefore, I will be voting no on the real estate tax levy by invoking the Rule Seventeen. Thank you.
It's Rule Seventeen. Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you, uh, Madam President. You know, um, when we first had, when we first uh heard that we were gonna have a one point two billion dollar deficit, I was like, oh my God, what are we gonna do? Uh, we're not talking about a five hundred thousand dollar, five hundred million dollar deficit or a seven hundred million dollar deficit. We're talking about a billion, over a billion dollars. Uh, I was like, how are we gonna do it? Well, the ladies, uh, the, the three ladies who worked on this budget and everyone else, Mayor, your administration have done a fantastic job. When you first brought this to us, you asked all of us, I need your input. I need you all to give me some suggestions. I need some help on trying to balance this budget. Well, Mayor, I gotta say, you did talk to all of us. You asked all of us for our input. You spoke to every caucus. You called us all up individually. Matter of fact, I recall speaking to you while you were at the hospital with your mother. Uh, and you were very concerned about not only trying to help balance this budget, but also concerned about trying to help people to feel comfortable with it. So I just want to say thank you, Mayor. I think you've done an outstanding job. Everyone in your administration have done an outstanding job. You listened to the unions, uh, not laying off the people that work for the city of Chicago. You kept businesses going in spite of all of these challenges that we have. You, you're helping people with their rents in spite of all of the challenges that we're having. In spite of the fact that the federal government and this, uh, this guy who we just beat his butt uh, is fighting you every day and not giving us the resources that we need, you still figured out a way to make it work. You came up with money for violence prevention, something that God knows we need on the west and the south side in particular. Uh, and I'm sure in many other communities that don't get as much play about it as we do. But you came up with the money. You came up with money to help, um, to give jobs to returning citizens. You came up with more money to help young people to be able to get employed and have programs. You got to the heart of the challenges, but you didn't get there by yourself. You got there by listening to us and talking with us. You know, initially, no one could feel this budget, none of us. But we constantly worked on it together. You came up with the infrastructure, the capital improvement. You figured out a way so that we can continue to bring resources to our communities, which is very important, which is gonna have an impact on people's property values and people's quality of lives in their community. So Mayor, I just want to say thank you to all of the people that's been involved. There's so many things that have been mentioned. I know the Progressive Caucus pushed you real hard, Mayor. I mean, real hard on a mental, uh, a mental health issue. And you figured out a way to come up with something. I mean, each time someone has pushed you real hard, you went back to the drawing board and you came back with something to try to help us. Now, I know the easy thing for all of us to do is to do nothing. The easy thing for everyone to do is to go against and not be a part of. But you know, the fact of the matter is, at the end of the day, we have to have a balanced budget. We cannot have a, an unfunded mandate like they have in Washington, D.C. and other areas of government. We have to balance this budget. So if it's not balanced in one place, it has to be balanced in another place. So you know, it's ironic that folks ask for so many things but don't want to vote on the things that's gonna help bring the money. And you still listening, you, you are still listening to all of the ideas that people are bringing to the table. And I hope that, Mayor, as these ideas come to the table and they seem like they can be feasible, that we put them in place and we give people some money back. Because as you know and I know, folks need it. These are hard times. I mean, we're dealing with a pandemic. We're dealing with, uh, people tearing up, uh, businesses in our communities. We're dealing with all types of challenges, people losing their lives. But we, as a city council, we still have to sustain ourselves for the citizens of the city of Chicago. And we have no choice but to do what is necessary, not to do what is popular, not to do what sounds good. We have to do what is right for all of us to be able to sustain ourselves. And God knows that we pray that something happens in Washington, D.C. Something happens in Springfield, something happens with the proposed casino that may come up in the future, that we're able to backtrack and put things back in place. Yeah, it's easy to say, you know, to give up money and do this and don't worry about people in, in New York or Wall Street. But we all know that if we don't have the opportunity to be able to leverage dollars, we're dead in the water. So we have to do what's smart, what's necessary and what's right, but this budget has a lot of compassion in it. So much compassion that all my colleagues have touched on it, that you touch every community, Mayor. So I just want to say to you, to all of the people in your administration, to Alderman Wagasback, Alderman Pat Dow, everyone that's been involved, all of the caucuses, uh, the Black Caucus has worked so hard and we all came together. You know, uh, we just want to say, I just want to say thank you, Mayor. Thank you. And hopefully, hopefully, we will continue to try and figure out a way to bring some of these taxes down in the future and make things better for folks. But in the interim, we have to continue to move forward. We have to continue to put ourselves in a position to be able to attract more to this city. Because I see a lot of horizon, a lot of great horizons coming after we get these vaccines and after things get back in gear, I think we're gonna be doing very well. But I think we're gonna be in a better position to be able to deal with it and help our community. So Mayor, I just want to say, I commend you on what you've done. I admire, uh, all of the things that you've done and talking to everyone, everyone, even folks you didn't even want to talk to, you spoke to in trying to make this budget better. I just want to say thank you and I support this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. You made me cry. You touched my heart and I appreciate you. The chair recognizes Alderman Martin.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise today to state that I will be voting no on the proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. Before and during my time in office, when I went door-to-door to talk about the issues that matter most to the residents of the forty-seventh ward, many of them shared their fears that they may soon be priced out of the neighborhood. And it's a terrible feeling to return to those homes two years later and in some cases find that their worst fears have become a reality. Chicago's fiscal reality i- is clear. We need a combination of revenue, savings and efficiencies, as well as structural reform to put us on the path to solvency. And I believe as city leaders that we can't shy away from the set of difficult options in front of us. But I have very deep reservations about locking in our reliance on property taxes in such a dramatic way without first having a more public conversation regarding realistic plans for closing Chicago's structural deficit. Nor do I support committing Chicagoans to an annual C P I increase without making substantial concurrent progress on progressive revenue options that can offset the burden our residents will continue to bear. In this case, I believe that there were multiple preferable and realistic proposals that could have simultaneously avoided layoffs as well as a significant property tax increase, an increase that I fear will displace some of our neighbors, especially as the ongoing pandemic continues to stress people's budgets. As I engaged my constituents around this year's proposed budget, I also heard consistently about their desire that we reimagine public safety throughout Chicago, in part by scrutinizing closely the budgets for our public safety departments and by embracing forward-thinking approaches to investing in safety outside of the police department. Accordingly, I commend wholeheartedly the leaders of our various alderman caucuses for helping secure additional funds for violence prevention funding or programming, as well as the creation of a new pilot in which crisis workers and paramedics will will jointly respond to certain mental health-related 911 calls. I also though understand many residents disappointment and anger that these programs, especially that crisis response pilot, weren't provided the type of robust funding needed to provide that bold transformational change that they've been demanding, that we all want to bring as elected officials, especially in the wake of the murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor and Ahmaud Arbery. I agree that both of these initiatives need more substantial investment and that more generally, city council must play a more active role in helping craft and champion the policies that will bring about the systemic public safety changes that residents across our city have been demanding. Still, these two programs are a step forward. I'd also like to commend the Chicago Federation of Labor for offering revenue and efficiency proposals that allowed us to avoid layoffs and to furlough only high-paid non-union employees like alderpeople, department commissioners and the mayor. Especially during a pandemic, I believe it's critical that Chicago's residents have healthcare and a stable living and that the city continues to provide the services that we all need and deserve. Finally, I would like to acknowledge that although we have all had some tense conversations over the past several weeks, if not months, about this proposed budget, that those conversations and many others have ultimately helped raise the level of debate, dialogue and policymaking that our residents need and deserve during these challenging times. I commend Chairman Dowell and the Budget Committee for hosting meetings earlier this year and more recently, of course, that dived into complicated issues, including the budget for our police department. I commend Chairman Wagasback and the Finance Committee for soliciting memos from alderpeople around their preferred revenue solutions and holding hearings over a two-day period to delve into many of those proposals. Also, my thanks to CFO Bennett, Budget Director Park and the rest of the administration's team for all the information you've shared and the myriad questions that you've answered. I look forward to building upon this engagement next year as we all continue working to improve the physical, mental and financial health of our city. Thank you, Madam President.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Martin. Uh, the chair recognizes Alderman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Chairman Dowell, first of all, for her leadership, uh, during this budget process and I want to thank her staff also. And Mayor, I also want to thank your team, uh, for their commitment and your commitment, uh, to the residents of the city of Chicago. Uh, like many of my colleagues said, and, uh, particularly, uh, Alderman Walt Burnett, uh, we entered into this budget season, uh, trying to make up ground um, as a result of the losses due to COVID-19. COVID has not gone anywhere. In fact, uh, it's hitting this city as hard as it did in May through, uh, March through June of this year. And so our difficult times, I believe, are, are still ahead of us. And our difficult budget is still ahead of us. But that does not say that this was not a difficult budget and some items in this budget that, uh, were particularly difficult for me as well. Uh, but most important, Mayor, I, I think your budget puts us on a path to flourishing as a city rather than one that's leaning toward bankruptcy. And for that reason, I support the budget. But most important, uh, Madam President, I believe it's important that I support this budget because of the investment of over $36 million that's earmarked in 2021 that goes towards violence prevention. Uh, my ward experiences approximately a murder every week and a half. And we should not have to live like that. I can't help but to be persuaded by the words of my colleagues, uh, about fairness. I too believe that it's not fair to overburden our taxpayers by a property tax increase. But that's something that I'm personally willing to do when it comes down to fairness. Because it's not fair that the residents of my ward have to deal with whether or not they feel secure in their own homes. Whether or not they feel secure being in their backyards, enjoying their own property. So it's not fair that they have a feeling of not being able to sit on their porches because they fear that a bullet may shatter their dreams and shatter their lives. It's not fair that they can't walk along the street without the fear of a bullet chattering, shattering their dreams and shattering their lives. Madam President, it's not fair that in this ward, that a person dies every week and a half. So we have to look at what we are willing to sacrifice to make sure every resident of this city, every resident can live a peaceful life. And that comes with some sacrifices, in my opinion. Sacrifices that I have to be willing to make and sacrifices that we have to be willing to make. $54 is just one meal for my family. I'm willing to sacrifice that so that the residents on the west side of Chicago and on the south side of Chicago can live a peaceful life, can live a life where they can feel that their young, uh, children can grow up to be productive adults in this city. So when we talk about fairness, we have to look at it from every aspect and ask ourselves, are our difficult times still ahead or are they sitting on us now? And I believe that they're still ahead of us. Because this 36 million that we are investing in, in, in violence prevention is going to help provide some of that peace to our residents. So I say it's important to continue to invest in violence prevention rather than to disinvest in communities that, 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 um, that need resources. So Mayor, I support this budget for that reason and many others. But I'm particularly supportive by the fact that you see the need for investments on the west side and south side of Chicago to help finally drive down crime in the city of Chicago. And also, I'm very supportive of investing in mental health and creating a shared response model, uh, a pilot program within the city of Chicago. I ask that my colleagues support this budget as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Talia Faro. Uh, the chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Reverend Beth Brown of Lincoln Park Presbyterian, in her speech during in our inauguration in May of 2019, shared these words. "As the city, we are better together. Being better together means that no one gets left behind. We are enough and we have enough." I remember hearing that speech and feeling so connected to the reasons why I was there that day, taking my seat as an elected representative of my community. This year's budget process has made those reasons even more evident to me. And I'm choosing to remain connected to the words of Reverend Brown. "We are enough and we have enough." "I'm committed to continue to organize with communities and movements to push for the change we need. I'm committed to doing the collective work we need inside of our council to become an independent legislative body with committees that allow for the open discussion of our bills and where there is ample space for community participation. I look forward to the vote to eliminate the welcoming city ordinance carve-outs next month and to create the structures that allow for transparent and democratic decision-making and policymaking so we can at last govern this city better together. However, after a summer of historic protests for justice and against police brutality and this investment in our communities, we are here today to decide on a budget that doesn't leap up to Reverend Brown's words. We're voting on a budget that continues to prioritize policing with a $1.7 billion budget over all other services to support our communities. A budget that continues throwing money at an institution that has demonstrated itself to be resistant to reform and that has cost us more than $1 billion in the last decade in misconduct lawsuits and servicing debt to pay those lawsuits. We are voting on a budget that raises property taxes on working people and families for decades to come. People who are already on the verge of displacement before this pandemic and who are now worrying about how they will be able to recover from this moment. Property tax increases will inevitably result in rent increases that will impact people already behind on the rent payments and their ability to stay in their communities. Our people are desperate. Every pantry in my community has long lines of people trying to get food for their families. Chicago has been devastated by the pandemic with Black and Latinx communities suffering the worst. Poverty, unemployment and food scarcity has increased in the city and this budget does nothing meaningful to stave off this economic disaster for people of Chicago. In what may be one of the worst recessions ever, this budget does nothing to provide economic support. In fact, it will make our communities' economic conditions worse over time. We're also facing a wave of violence in our communities. The new investment in violence, which is welcome, in violence prevention, which is welcome, is $10 million. Again, our police budget is $1.7 billion. With the pandemic raging through our communities and the economic situation worsening, we can expect more mental health issues and emergencies in our community. We got $2 million to split between two crisis response pilots. That's not enough by any stretch of imagination to even complete a planning phase for either pilot. This budget reject a vision to create safe communities through a mental health crisis response and support system. This is a budget that relies on regressive revenue measures like parking meters and ticketing instead of looking at alternatives directed at making the wealthy pay. We're voting on a budget that includes promises without plans, plans without personnel or metrics, or ways to hold our agencies accountable in their execution. If a budget is a statement of values, this budget process reflects that we don't regard mutual respect or collaboration as a value. And the budget itself reflects that we don't regard transparency, a fundamental element of good governance and accountable government administration, as values. It also has highlighted that the council, unless it transforms itself, is a hostage to the executive branch who treats the council as a temporary transactional inconvenience. We can talk about some wins, but in the old-school transactional method of scoring political points. But these are not wins, especially in the context of this historical moment where we have an opportunity to create a new path, a new paradigm. I'm grateful to Chairwoman Dowell for all her work and patience through this budget process. I'm also grateful to my colleagues who heard the urgency of creating a non-law enforcement crisis response and care model and agreed to make demands around this need. Grateful for the possibility of standing together across caucuses, Black, Latino and Progressive, to make the case for more resources for violence interruption, which is urgent for our communities and also no layoffs. None of these things should take a big fight to get or an auction-like kind of process. The urgency for these actions is evident and it's been clearly communicated to us by our neighbors, the ones we represent. For all stated above, I'm voting no on this budget. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, uh, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Uh, the chair recognizes, uh, Mike, uh, Alderman Mike Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, 2020 has been a deeply challenging year in many respects and has made the 2021 budget that much more difficult to craft and to vote on. Our world and city have been ravaged by COVID-19 and the impacts of the pandemic have touched our city to the tune of a $1.2 billion budget gap. Over the past two months, we went to work analyzing the budget. And as a member of the, both the Latino and Progressive Caucus, we came together to build a list of demands with some of the same major planks across these two groups as that of the demands of the Black Caucus. Due to the collective work of the various caucuses and our allies in labor and community, we have won the following in this budget. No layoffs of the 350 union positions slated for elimination and no furloughs for non-union staff making less than $100,000. This would have had a net negative effect on the delivery of city services as well, as well as placing families, working families out of work during this pandemic. Secondly, we put in $10 million more dollars for violence prevention programs, bringing the city's investment in this area to $36 million. And third, and I truly want to congratulate the last speaker, Alderwoman Rosanne Rodriguez Sanchez, for champion efforts to move from $656,000 for a co-responder-only model to over $1 million for a pilot that will include a non-law enforcement mental health first responder. Lastly, we decoupled amendments to the welcoming city ordinance from the budget as championed by myself and other council allies and as demanded by organizers and immigrant activists. Due to these achievements, I've decided to vote yes to the 2021 City of Chicago budget. And this wasn't an easy decision. The budget contains items that are difficult to stomach. The increases in fines and fees will be difficult for working families. We should have more progressive revenue streams prepared in the future so that those who have the most pay accordingly. And we need to continue to examine the best ways to deploy public safety resources, including increased investment in non-police first responder models and further funding violence prevention intervention efforts. And off-topic, we need to continue to examine the effectiveness and usefulness of the Juvenile Intervention Support Corporation, the JISC, and police in schools. The, the pandemic has exasperated many of the inequities our communities already face. And my commitment to addressing those disparities remains unwavering. The parts of this budget worthy of praise were, were achieved by collaborative efforts of the Black, Latino and Progressive Caucuses in partnership with labor and community organizations. This powerful coalition ensured the benefits of this budget, which outweigh the bad. The collaboration between our various caucuses is an example of what we can accomplish together when focused on a progressive racial equity-focused agenda. In doing so, we have set a strong position to continue to work for a more equitable city budget moving forward. This budget is a step in that direction and that's why it has earned my vote. I thank my executive committee who's helped vet me through this project and process to the 22nd Ward IPO. And more importantly, I want to thank my constituents who have weighed in on this topic via our virtual Progressive Caucus Town Hall and to those who have reached out to me in person. I plan to redouble my efforts to work and organize with residents and my fellow council members to push as hard as we can for future budgets that contain more progressive elements. More importantly, I am committed to working with my colleagues to change the budget process and make it more equitable. I congratulate Budget Chair Dowell for moving us in that, in that, in that process. But I encourage folks to read today's Chicago Sun-Times editorial by the Board and Leadership of Chicago United for Equity. And I quote them, "We must reimagine how we budget, how we debate and how we negotiate and what is off-limits, no matter how heated our politics." I look forward to working on these efforts moving forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. And I also want to acknowledge Budget Chair Alderman Dowell for her excellent work, uh, during our budget process and debate. Uh, she did just wonderful as, as always. Um, and President, this will be my 18th budget, so I'm no rookie. I believe I've gathered great appreciation from my constituents and indeed all Chicagoans. And I have never, ever taken them for granted, not for a second. Couple of days ago, um, you were witness, uh, to how deeply we cared about each other in my community. Uh, and how we share, um, our bounty. And my goal has always been, from day one, uh, to move my community forward and along with it this great city. And in my 18 years, we have built a lot of infrastructure. We have built schools, parks, libraries and we improve the community of life, uh, probably of life. Uh, and crime has worn down. So this time, this time I turn, uh, and join you, uh, in being part of our city's renewal. Because this budget is what it does. It sets us up for a quick turnaround from the greatest recession ever. In the last recession we faced, we said about sell our precious city assets. And today, we have nothing to show for it. Why do you say? Because we decided not to face the music, as I said, the tough decisions that needed to be made to not put the city in peril. And to be honest, I, I regret that part. I regret that we did not have a collaborative effort in making those decisions. However, this is not the case today. We've had an extensive debate, a back and forth between all of us. all of us. And I have been a witness to the great work by Budget Chair Dow. Obviously, as is always the case, we are political in nature. And this vote, and this budget reflect that. I believe, not because those who don't support it, not because they don't love the city, not because they don't care what happens in the city, but it's based on a political calculation. I respect that. But for me, it's about communities and about this great city and this future. I'm hardened to the fact that finally this city is investing in our most marginalized communities. I'm talking about Invest Southwest. I not only support it, but I applaud it. I'm also hardened by the fact that this is a very progressive budget that you are putting forth. And it does the following, because for years, a progressive agenda has asked and demanded that you fund mental health, and you're doing that. They have urged that you fund violence prevention, and you're doing that, adding 10 million to a 36 million total. A progressive agenda has also asked that you cut CPD funding and reimagine the way we enforce leasing. And you are eliminating 600 positions to the 235 million dollars. A progressive agenda is also asked of you to start funding for non-law enforcement initiatives. And you are doing that this year, over a million dollars. A progressive agenda has asked you to do more to help the vulnerable, like the disabled, providing accessible sidewalks, lighting, and other infrastructure to make their lives better. So I'm glad you're doing that. A progressive agenda has asked you to invest more in workforce development. You're doing it to the 211 million dollars, especially in helping those especially affected by incarceration and displacement. A progressive agenda has also asked you to do more for youth programming. You're doing that to the tune of 38 million dollars, to help those facing our greatest risk of violence. And finally, I think this is not just progressive, but I think all of us, join you and your initiative of the Capital Pen Program that you outlined. It much needed boost economically, employing hundreds of construction workers and helping many that are currently unemployed. And so, this budget is about bringing the city together. And I think my colleague, Talia Farrow, Alderman Brunad, and others have talked at length about what needs to happen to make the city better. Alderman David Moore talked about that by helping and improving the lives of African-Americans, we all do better. And I could not agree with you more. And your proposal does that. And I hope that when we invest it and we put it on the ground and we create hundreds of jobs, we do a follow-up to see what needs to be done more. This is about a city in dire straits, in a crisis that no one expected, a pandemic so great it has not, we have not seen in 100 years. So you can see why our budget is strained to the tune of 1.2 billion dollars. But I think you had foresight of bringing all those pieces together and working collaboratively, even though people said that you have not. And this is why I sometimes I take a step back from all the years I've been here. I think we're becoming a little too personal in our attacks. I think we're becoming a little too polarized. And I understand the moment of politics across this country and now our city. And I hope in the years to come, we mature and able to work together to move our communities and our city forward, because our constituents not just depend on it, but demand it. You must set the tone, and I think you're doing that. Sometimes we say tough things that need to be said. I've heard them all. And I respect to no end your toughness and your personality, because this is what the city needs. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Cardenas. The chair recognizes Alderman Les Spada.
Thank you, Madam President. My sincere appreciation to everyone who lent their voices and their leadership to this process. I unfortunately stand to be counted as a no-vote on this budget today. I stand in recognition of four obligations I believe I hold as an Alderman. I stand and think about my financial obligation to this city to make sure that we raise revenue responsibly, that we spend that revenue responsibly. When I look at the restructuring of our debt, which appears to trade short-term savings for billions more in payments over time, I cannot square that against my sense of financial responsibility. When I look at our increase in property taxes, it simply is more than the constituents of the First Ward can bear. I know that this seems like a modest increase, and perhaps in some communities that is true. But in the First Ward over the past 20 years, property taxes have gone up by 357%. Like many of you, when I knocked on doors just a couple of years ago, it was one of the major forces that were driving people out of the First Ward. And I cannot move in that direction with them. I believe I have a moral obligation to my constituents to make the investments that make their lives healthy, that help them to thrive. And I have to recognize that while we have kept us from making layoffs in this budget, the 1,800 vacancies that are not moving forward will have a direct impact on the city services that they experience. I will share that I vote today in memory of Sebastian Brandon and Alexa, whose lives were taken by gun violence at the ages of 16, 23, and 27, respectively. I've been able to meet with their parents, to share in their tears, and to see in actually a very brilliant, comprehensive plan to reduce violence, what the investments would take that would actually reduce violence, that would save lives. I wish I could believe that we were making a sizable down payment on that plan and that budget, but I do not see it. I believe I have a democratic obligation to listen to the tens of thousands who delivered a clear narrative on the budget they were hoping to see in the city's own survey, in the thousands who responded directly to my office, to convey their values, their vision for what this city could be, to Mal and Sean, who testified over the last couple of days. I want you to know that your words, your passion, your anger do not fall on deaf ears. And I vote in solidarity with you today. But finally, I will say, I believe as a progressive, I have an obligation to Chicago's movement for racial and social justice. I truly believe and am so hopeful for the direction that that movement is taking us in. And I know from the way you have communicated to me in hard and challenging and convicting words that you do not believe that this budget reflects the values and the vision for what this city could be. That said, I share a great optimism and hope that that budget, grounded in racial justice and equity, already sits within the capacities of this council. I believe that the imagination, the creativity, the vision, the skill is there within those who already lead in this council and within the wisdom of our communities. And so I do pledge that after we go to the safety of our homes, enjoy a safe and healthy Thanksgiving, that we will return on Monday and use that day through next August on a budget that all of us can be proud on and wholeheartedly vote yes on. I vote with no happiness on a no vote today, but with my commitment to that kind of budget for next year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Les Spada. Folks, we are winding down to the final number of speakers who have signed up. If you plan to speak, you must raise your hand now, and I will recognize you in order. Last call for speakers to raise their hand to speak. All right. The chair recognizes Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Don't give me crumbs and tell me it's cake. We're in a global pandemic, and there is no way in the world that we shouldn't be balancing this budget on the backs of taxpayers. We shouldn't be increasing any fines. And we keep throwing around this, we are investing in youth. That's something we should have been doing. You're talking about investing money in violence prevention. Those are things that we should have been doing. And so I'm baffled by how we are okay with this budget. $56 to an elder in my ward, that's her medicine for the month. $56 is food for a family in my ward a month. We're talking about where the median income is $25,000. And this is what we do to folks in a global pandemic. The question I need to ask you all is, did we do everything in our power to make sure that we balance this budget without doing it on the backs of low-income and working families? And my answer is no. My answer is completely no. We cannot ignore what has happened in this city since the pandemic. As a matter of fact, I'll even go back even further. We can't ignore the history of Chicago and its racist policies and the things it's done for centuries. And we have a responsibility and a duty to do right by all Chicagoans. But too often, we pick and choose who we're going to take care of. It's funny, the news came out yesterday and said that all these service calls that are ignored and that are not answered historically happened on where? The South and West Side. That's a reflection of, but we paying people $160,000 to be a commissioner or deputy commissioner when we can't get trees trimmed, when we can't get garbage picked up, when we can't get the basic needs in our community. And then we will turn around and say, oh, it's just $56? Why y'all increasing property taxes? Get these folks a living increase. Let's do that. Some of our communities are already taxed out and bearing the burden of the things that we don't do right in this community. We should have been working on this budget back in March. But too often, we wait till August and September and try to figure it out. The thought that we even passing this budget right now doesn't sit well with me, because people don't want to go to Christmas or go past Thanksgiving. But you got this job, but you've been sitting here for a long time. You got this good health insurance. You got this free dental. Do right by the people in all of our communities. Y'all people are so quick to talk about white flight. Let's talk about black flight. Let's talk about how this city no longer has a good amount of black folks that live in this community. We not going to talk about that. We are not going to talk about that we take crumbs all the time. We could have had it all. Now, what I will say about Alderman Padilla and what I will say about Madam Mayor is we did make a step in the right direction. But we could have kept going. We could have got so much more. And the thought that we love throwing around, we progressive, progressive ain't voting against your people. Progressive is not taking away 600 already vacant positions in the police when 87% of the city said defund the police. That's not progressive. It's just not. Why can't we tax the rich? We continue to go over and over again by taxing everybody else but the people who could actually afford it. I'm at a point where, why are we even here? Why are we elected to represent people and then we do the status quo? Because that's what we doing. And then we call it a victory? I don't discount folks' hard work on trying. But we got to try harder and do way better than we doing, because our constituents, especially on the South and West Side, are looking at us like we crazy. They already can't afford to live in this city. They're already being evicted. Yes, during a global pandemic, we got people in our community being evicted when it's a moratorium. Where is the tax to People's Gas? Where is the tax to ComEd? Where is the tax to LaSalle Street? Where is the tax to Walmart? Where is the tax to Amazon? Because those are the folks who are making millions and trillions of dollars in our community. And then we're sitting here like this was hard. It's even harder, because you could have voted no. And that's what the city asked us to do. I did a survey in my ward, and not one of my constituents said raise my property taxes. Not one of my constituents said put more money on fines. None of them. They're already struggling. And so at the end of the day, while we half-having each other and patting each other's on the backs, our constituents are looking at us like, really? This is what we elected? This is why we put you in office? It's not fair. We got to do a better job of working together to making sure that all Chicago is taken care of.
Alderman Taylor. The chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to Chairwoman Dow for chairing this budget process with the masterfulness of a composer and the patience of a saint. As has been reported, and as I've communicated to the residents of the 40th Ward, whom I proudly served during a pandemic and economic depression, I will be voting yes on this budget. I am voting yes reluctantly, not because of any intimidation by the executive branch, not as an abandonment of the principles that I share with those colleagues and comrades who wanted to see true progressive revenue options such as a pilot program, or those who want to divest from a bloated police budget in this year of principled protest. I firmly believe that those things and many more need to manifest in our city budgets to make our city better. It is what I fought for in the streets, what I knocked on doors, and have lost any semblance of a family life for. I vote yes reluctantly because of the moment we find ourselves in as a city and as a government. We begin with a $1.5 billion deficit with minimal funding from a hostile federal administration under Trump, a fair tax that didn't pass, and an Illinois legislature that is not convened now. Our restaurant, hotel, airport, and other industries whose taxes fund our city government have been decimated by COVID. In addition, our public transportation and public event revenue is a fraction of what we could typically expect to generate, and we don't know when those revenues will return, if ever. I began looking at this budget within that context. This wasn't a budget in which my focus was about what I wanted to achieve, but about what the city needs to survive in the immediate. That required the work and research to dig into the problem and identify what could be done. It led to the discovery that this council is not adequately equipped or resourced itself to truly make the case for the alternatives that could be implemented. The mayor's team, as reflected in the budget, is a fully equipped organization with budget analysts, lawyers, policymakers, department commissioners, and others that work all year long to try and solve the same budget challenge that we do, except alders start in September and work with at best a staff of six people, whose main priority is taking care of potholes, street sweeping, tree trimming, and many other service requests of our constituents. It's a mismatch from the beginning, which is why part of my decision included a commitment from the administration to work together to create budget working groups of alders to commence at the start of the year so that this government can function for the people it serves, and so we never have to be in this position again, not next year and not any year after. When this budget was introduced, it brought together a coalition of the Black, Latino, and progressive caucuses to negotiate for a stronger, better budget. With the help of our partners in labor, such as the CFL and grassroots organizers, we stopped 350 layoffs of Black and Brown city workers. We minimized the furloughs. We separated the welcoming city ordinance from the budget vote. We increased funding for violence prevention programs that don't rely on police to the tune of 36 million. And we wrote into law the first-ever non-law enforcement mental health response model in Chicago as part of a pilot. Those were all tangible, meaningful wins that were negotiated in this budget during this time of pandemic against what was initially proposed. This city should be immensely proud of the coalition that formed and will continue to work together because of this moment. To Mayor Lifeworth's credit, and to be fair than fair, in the words of Mayor Hell Washington, she was open to discussions. She came to the table, she negotiated and accepted changes that were not in the initial budget proposal. It wasn't always friendly. It wasn't always polite. But things moved, and we were able to win improvements through it. to win improvements through it. I personally made calls directly our mayor, unlike some, to communicate that I wasn't a default no, and what we needed to engage and communicate to find solutions together, and that we needed to engage and communicate to find solutions together, that we had to in this moment because of this pandemic. It was grueling and tense at many points, but the negotiations continued and we found agreement. That is how my yes vote came to be. I will always make the difficult choice for the city rather than saying I don't like anything in a budget and saying no before even looking at it. I can't in good conscience do that as we have people in financial pain now and folks who are worried about how to feed their families now as we speak. Finally, I want this council, council, sorry, I want this council and this city to remember that last year, when a coalition of mostly Black and Brown alders voted no on the 2020 budget, we were publicly targeted by a custom-built campaign website. I do not expect that we will see the same treatment of some of the committee chairs and other powerful, privileged white aldermen this year who are relying on the votes of myself and many of my Black and Brown colleagues to pass a budget. Committee budgets have not been slashed. Those alders will still continue to enjoy staff, support, and control over the legislative process, and those imbalances are part of the problem. That should also be noted as part of this budget as well. Throughout my time in government, I have learned that the dysfunction in our government is exacerbated by lack of process, engagement, negotiation, and above all, shared collaborative effort between the administration and the city council. It is my hope that we will continue to learn and improve at that because our city needs us to do so, and it's my commitment to do everything I can to improve that so that we can achieve the things that the people of Chicago demand of us. Thank you.
Vasquez, the chair recognizes Alderman Kapelman.
Thank you so much, Madam President. 2020 has in many ways been worse than awful. COVID started it, but the brutal murder of George Floyd didn't help matters any, along with the looting that followed clearly this year was a major wake-up call, and I know many of you feel the same. If there's anything good that's come out of this, it was the gift of time for needed reflection on issues that we've been ignoring way before COVID ever hit us. Issues like income inequality across our planet, an affordable housing shortage, institutional racism that has allowed Chicago to be a tale of two cities, chronic homelessness, global climate change affecting Lake Michigan, and the desperate need for police reform. I knew back in spring that Chicago would have a budget from hell, as all cities across the world are also facing. I also knew to get through this, we would all have to join together and make great sacrifices, and those with more would have to do more. I'm voting yes on this budget because rather than be reactionary, it's responsive to the needs that are staring directly at us while also embracing the understanding how federal and state dollars complement the work we do. It's a budget that calls for our different departments to work and collaborate together more so than ever before. I'm voting yes on this budget because it's leading us more in the direction of reform that will never be fully captured in anyone's lifetime, but nevertheless, must be continually sought. To be clear, this was a budget where the reaction to it was more generational in nature. The more visceral responses were often from those who identify as millennials and Generation Z, given they are the first generation that is destined to be worse off than their parents. And along with all the other terrible issues affecting our planet, their anger is justifiable. Today's task is focused on getting a working budget for the city of Chicago. But our task tomorrow is to bring needed healing to those who are experiencing intense emotional pain. It may be hard to see their wounds because they cover them up with anger and for some with the use of shaming tactics. Social media feeds on it and does more to divide than unite. Nevertheless, we must move forward together to build trust with each other, for without that trust, polarization grows while our democracy breaks down. Authoritarianism quickly moves in to fill that vacuum, and that's dangerous. It's extraordinarily dangerous. A lifetime ago, I was a Franciscan friar, and that's actually what brought me to move to Chicago. And the words from St. Francis have always captured my heart. He said, "Let us begin again, for up to now, we have done little or nothing." So let us begin again, but let's do it together. And thank you, Madam President, for your hard work. I met with you many times, and I really, really appreciate it. The last time we talked, you called me late at night. I'm going to confess, I was asleep, and here you are still working. But it's hard work. It's hard work that involves all of us. So thank you, and let's keep working together. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Kapelman. The chair recognizes Alderman Coleman.
Thank you, Madam President. As leaders of Chicago, it is our responsibility to make difficult decisions. Every day, we are asked to set priority, right? When one priority moves ahead, another one must fall behind. I was reminded that to this very day, six years ago, I started journeying in becoming Alderman of the greatest ward in the city of Chicago. And six years later, I am faced with the choice of voting in favor of the budget and the real estate tax increase, or voting in solidarity with the vulnerable property owners in my ward, like Ms. Cunningham, whose mother is in hospice in West Inglewood, or Mr. Hernandez from the 6300 block of Maplewood, who caught the bus all the way to 63rd and Racine to get a turkey for him and his family for the holiday. I was elected to serve my community, and today I will prioritize my community by voting no. Mayor Lori Lightfoot, I respect and appreciate your leadership. I am proud to serve and work with your administration as a strong, Black, progressive woman. To Manny Jurell, Chairman Padale, Chairman Jason Urban of the Black Caucus, and Progressive Caucus Chairwoman Sophia King, you all have been wonderful to this freshman Alderman. Mayor, you and your administration have worked with the hard-working men and women of labor and city workers and businesses to develop a plan to get through our most difficult time in the city of Chicago. Despite my admiration for this group and their hard work, I still can't support even a modest increase in real estate taxes, not right now. The property owners in my ward cannot afford to pay more. Especially during a pandemic, in communities like Inglewood, Chicago Line Engage Park, $15 or $20 a month can make or break a family. At our most vulnerable, our seniors can't afford a tax increase. Our essential workers cannot afford a tax increase. The young people who have lost their jobs cannot afford even a tax increase for their renting. Today, I prioritize my community in this tough decision. I will vote against the property tax increase, but Mayor Lori Lightfoot and to this great council, I do support our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning, colleagues. We here today have a luxury. We have a luxury of knowing that our income and our paycheck, paychecks are guaranteed until 2023, anyway. Most Chicagoans do not have that security. They are struggling right now to make ends meet with what little they have. They simply cannot force new money into their bank accounts to make ends meet. Families make sacrifices to get through hard times. We have not. Many of this budget supporters are struggling right now to justify the continuation of $309 million in property taxes, whose purpose in the levy has expired. The $94 million in new property taxes, the $190 million in new taxes, fines, and fees, and the nonstop tax increases being dropped on our families for the next 38 years, all at a time when our families can least afford it. There are millions of dollars that still could be saved or redirected. However, this budget has done none of that. Rather, this budget only takes millions of new, not only takes millions of new dollars from our residents, but also balances itself based on hundreds of millions of dollars in new debt for the next two generations of Chicagoans to deal with. Support for this budget truly shows how disconnected its supporters are from the reality and fear gripping our fellow Chicagoans. Parents are standing in unemployment lines, virtually. Grandparents are literally in food pantry lines. COVID-19 has our neighbors gasping for air in hospitals and children worried about their future. Where is our empathy? I've been working every day since the city shut down in March. My office has been open. We never shut our doors. I've pushed hard to help my residents, as well as all of the Chicagoans who've come to my office for help. I've heard the many desperate pleas from what can only be called True Grit Chicago families, terrified of losing it all this year. This city's humanity is at stake. 2020 has kicked our residents in the teeth, robbed and spat on them. Why is this city council trying to justify harming them further for the next four decades? This isn't just a fiscal vote, my friends, it's a moral vote. And I, for one, cannot, as a person of faith, look at my 15th Ward families in the eye and lie to them that this budget is in their best interest. Madam President, I am an unquestionable, I am an unquestionable opposition and urge my colleagues to vote no on these items. We must return to the drawing board and let our empathy guide us. We have time to set this right, and I encourage my colleagues to do just that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez-Rosa.
Thank you, Madam President. Last Monday, I asked 35th Ward residents to respond to a brief survey, asking their thoughts on the 2021 budget proposal we are voting on today. In just a week, 765 Chicagoans, 649 of which identified as 35th Ward residents, completed the survey. Of survey respondents that identified as 35th Ward residents, 92% did not support this budget's property tax hike scheme. That overwhelming majority wanted our city to pursue alternatives. What alternatives? 62% wanted to cut CPD's $1.7 billion budget. Another 10% would maybe support such cuts. 74% wanted to see a new tax on Amazon warehouses and other package distribution centers. 61% wanted to draw a larger amount from our $900 million rainy day fund. 71% wanted to see our city pursue payment in lieu of taxes from large landholding nonprofits. 63% wanted to see a more aggressive tip surplus, and 71% supported raising the real estate transfer tax for properties that sell for over $1 million. I am voting no today to stand with my neighbors who want to see our city pursue those alternatives to a property tax hike, and who want to see a city hall that puts social services and real public safety programs before more racist policing. I am voting no to stand with working-class Chicagoans who are struggling to survive in this moment of crisis. More than half, 55% of survey respondents that identified as 35th Ward residents, reported that COVID-19 had negatively impacted their household income. 31%, nearly one in three, reported having trouble keeping up with their housing expenses since the start of this pandemic. One in three. Perhaps more striking than these numbers are the comments my neighbor shared. "I will no longer be able to afford to live in the house I have owned for 20 years. We can barely pay our mortgage now. We are not going to be able to stay in Logan Square that we love. I'm losing old neighbors left and right. I truly can't afford it. We are struggling to make ends meet. We have no more to give. We can barely eat." I know that some of my colleagues are voting yes under duress today. Arms were twisted, threats were made. I know some of my colleagues are voting yes because of concessions won by the Black Caucus, Latino Caucus, and Progressive Caucus. I'm so proud that we came together and stopped layoffs, won increased funding for violence prevention, and language mentioning a non-law enforcement approach in next year's very modest mental health crisis first responder pilot program. Thank you, Chairwoman King. Thank you, Chairman Urban, and Chairman Maldonado, and all caucus members on the job well done. And Mayor, I thank you for listening to grassroots immigrant advocacy organizations and the Latino and progressive caucuses, and decoupling our welcoming city ordinance amendments from this budget vote today. Thank you. While I'm proud of the concessions we've won and progress we've made, I know that if we had stood together and held out just a little bit longer, we could have protected our ward's working families from the harm of yet another property tax hike. We could have come closer to the social and economic justice Chicagoans deserve. I respect my colleagues that are voting yes today, but while I respect your decision, I respectfully disagree that this was the best budget we could have won for struggling working families in our neighborhoods. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Alderman Ramirez-Rosa. The chair recognizes Alderman Leslie Hairston.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the city council. What we are voting on here today is an entire budget package. And while we each have things that we wanted, some of the things we got, some of the things we did not get. But I think what is important is that the Black, Latino, and progressive caucuses came together in an unprecedented way, and we were able to get investments into our communities that our communities say that we need. It's no doubt that COVID-19 brought us to this SOS moment, and that means we had to, as a city, to stop, observe, and shift. And that's what we are doing at this time. I know a lot of people are angry and passionate, and they want more, and I want more, and I will continue to fight for more. As a matter of fact, Mayor, you and I have gone round and round almost every night. And I hope that the administration is hearing what the people are asking for and that we are prepared to shift. The work on increasing funding for mental health co-responder model does not stop with this budget. It doesn't stop here today. It will continue, and I will continue to fight for it. The violence in this city is at an all-time high, hitting Black and Brown communities the hardest. We know what works, and we know what doesn't work. We do know that investing in violence prevention and violence interruption changes the trajectory of these numbers in our city, and we can put more people to work. I will continue to fight for more progressive revenue resources. I hope, I hope that we are moving and shifting towards true police reform in reallocating resources and implementing civilian oversight and arrestees' rights. This fight does not stop with this budget today. It will continue, and I will continue to fight for it. I have been shining the light on inequities in our city for years and will continue to do so and work to improve the conditions for not only those in the fifth ward, but for all citizens in the city of Chicago. And with that, I will be supporting this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Hairston. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, members of the city council. Last year, I addressed this council with the Budget of Hope. Last year's budget was a budget of hope that we would get money from the ambulance reimbursement fund to the tune of a hundred and sixty-three, hundred and sixty-four million. We didn't come anywhere close to that. We had a hope that we would get the real estate transfer tax pass in Springfield. We didn't get that in order to get relief. We also hope that we would get the casino, which we did, but I guarantee you, we will not see a casino built in this city in this term. Right now, we are oh-for-three as it relates to getting relief for our taxpayers, and now we resort to property taxes. We looked at fines and fees. We said we weren't going to do fines and fees. We would look to get away from it. Well, water shut-offs have cost this city millions of dollars because we stopped cutting off people's water, and people have stopped paying their bills. We're lowering the threshold for speedlight cameras, which is going to hit the Black and Brown community once again, more so than anything else. But once again, we want to raise property taxes with the forever tax. The tax is going to keep giving forever and ever. Let's not forget that we have a reassessment that is coming down the pipe. CPS property tax coming down the pipe. Park District property tax coming down the pipe. Ladies and gentlemen, we all know that they're going to blame the alderman for each and every one of those items. Now we have the largest scoop and toss in the city of Chicago's history. This is what I call scoop and toss on steroids. We are borrowing and refinancing one-point-seven billion dollars to kick the barrel down the road. Not the can, but we are kicking the barrel down the road. We are going to look at the next two years. What do we have to look for in the next couple of budgets? Are we going to do more scoop and toss? We know next year is going to be about one-point-five billion and maybe one-point, point-five billion the year after that. We are now borrowing fifteen million dollars in order to avert the layoffs, which we could have found some structural changes in order to obtain that. But I do applaud my CFL friends and all the calls that I got from labor. I'm going to continue to fight on their behalf, but when we look to borrow more money, more money, in order to make ends meet, is not sustainable. Let's not forget sometime this year, next year, we're going to have to borrow a few more hundred dollars, few more hundred million dollars for the police contract. We don't know what that's going to cost us. Are we going to borrow that and kick that down the road? Ladies and gentlemen, we are becoming the next Detroit here in the city of Chicago. We ask for fifty million dollars in order to match the corporate funds that are coming into this city for violence prevention. We got a concession of additional ten million of CARES Act, but we all know that is a one-time deal of CARES Act money to plug that particular hole. What are we going to do next year and the year after that? When we look at violence prevention, ladies and gentlemen, I have proposed to the administration and the police department a program called a cop house that won't cost the taxpayers a dime, and I cannot get that program off the ground as a pilot program here in the fifth district. When we look at violent prevention, that is a key tool that I'm trying to implement in my community to further the decrease in crime in my area, and I cannot get it approved at no cost to the taxpayers. We now have the highest murder rate in the last twenty years. We have over seven hundred people that have been killed in the city this year, and that is in the Black and Brown community where we claim that this is a great budget and that we are applauding one another and high-fiving one another when our communities are being devastated. Let's not forget that police are still being taken out of each and every one of our wards and sent downtown to protect our precious gem of downtown at the expense of the people in the community. We're lowering the amount of police that's going to be in this city, so that means less police in the communities. Ladies and gentlemen, did we forget that this city was looted twice this year? Have we forgot the devastation that has taken place this year? In my opinion, this has been the least transparent budget I've ever seen. The commissioners didn't answer half of our questions. Every question we had to get through the chair because they refused to answer the questions. I don't know if that was by design or if that was just not knowing the answers to our questions. Just last night, Jason Knowles on Channel Seven had a report that the six-oh-six-two-eight zip code had the most open service requests in the city of Chicago. And I know my staff and I do a heck of a job trying to get these service requests done. But to vote on a budget when I'm not getting the services that my constituents are paying for is a problem. To my Black Caucus friends, let me just say that whatever agreement was struck, did we get it in writing? Did we get some assurances that those things are going to take place? From what I understand during the budget process, most of the capital won't take place until twenty twenty-two, possibly twenty twenty-three. We may or may not see it depending on who is here and who gets re-elected. Adding a new committee at this particular time when people are struggling, I think is extremely irresponsible. But once again, the Black and Brown community is going to carry this budget, and we are the ones that always get the least of the resources. Madam Chair, Madam President, I'm going to close by saying that the Bible says, "A wise man provides for his children's children." I don't think it says that we need to provide them with the debt and the mismanagement that we are showing here today, and therefore I will be voting no. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Beal. The chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Chairwoman Dow. I want to join the chorus of praise for your strong and steady hand in leading this budget process. You've done an outstanding job, and you are deserving of the universal accolades that all our colleagues have given you. I will be voting no on this budget, and I want to begin by responding to a perspective that was offered by our colleague who had the honor of leading off this discussion several hours ago, where he suggested that people would accept this because they want predictability, they want stability, and if we make a decision now that a property tax increase will happen on a modest but annual basis tied to the Consumer Price Index every year for the next however many years in perpetuity, people would accept that because it gives them predictability and they can plan for it. I would suggest that the opposite is true. People will not want to see predictability if it comes with a sense of surrender. They want us to fight against property taxes. They want us to look for alternatives. They want to know that if we're going to ask them to pay more every year, that we've exhausted all other possible options, and ladies and gentlemen, we have not done that. I've suggested some alternatives. Many of my colleagues here have suggested some alternatives. The good news is, even though they haven't been incorporated in this budget, they will be as viable after this budget is adopted as they have been in the past couple of weeks during this debate, and we can continue having that discussion going forward. So all the ideas and suggestions and proposals that have come forth as a result of this spirited budget debate will remain on the table before us. I can't accept the fact that we're going to raise property taxes next year and the year after that and the year after that because I know it doesn't have to be that way. And for the proof, all you have to do is look at our sister government that we share the building with, Cook County. Back in nineteen ninety-five, their property tax levy was seven hundred and twenty million dollars. The budget that they're considering today in twenty twenty for fiscal year twenty twenty-one has a net property tax levy of seven hundred and twenty million dollars. They have not changed their net levy in all of these years. They've found alternatives, they've found other sources. Now, that is a net levy, so that's after you factor in TIP surplus money and expiring TIPS, which we're doing as well in this budget, using TIP surplus once again, which I support, by the way. But it just shows that there are many other potential solutions than going back to the property tax increase every year going forward. Now, had our sister government in Cook County made a different decision back in nineteen ninety-five, had they chosen the course of action that we're embarking on right now, that seven hundred and twenty million-dollar levy would be almost double at one-point-four billion dollars if they'd allowed it to float with the rate of inflation, which is typically modest, but there have been some years when it's been high, and due to compounding interest, it builds upon itself. We can't afford that as a city right now. As Alderman Beal mentioned, we have one of the highest per capita debt rates of every city in the country. I like the image that we're no longer kicking the can down the road, we're kicking a barrel. I may use that one, Alderman Beal. Thank you for that. We have to address that, and this budget vote will not resolve these issues. So I am voting no. We have more work to do, and I look forward to the continuing discussion of revenue alternatives, and hopefully we can cancel the annual CPI property tax increase next year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Hopkins. The chair recognizes Alderman Irving, and just to be clear, we are coming to the end of the speakers who have signed up. So with that, Alderman Irving, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the council. This is an interesting conversation that we're having here today, but first, let me thank Chairman Dow for the work that she's done on bringing this budget forward. Director Parks, CFO Bennett, the IGA staff for the late-night conversations. Also, thanks to you, Mayor, for the open and sometimes colorful dialogue that we've had throughout this process. And while we may not agree on everything, I can definitely agree at this point in time, this is the best path forward. I would also like to thank the members of all the caucuses that worked together throughout this process, members of the Black Caucus, Latino, Progressive Caucus, working together to accomplish some things that we've never really done before. And finally, I also have to thank the members of my own caucus for their support and following me at sometimes difficult points and times throughout this process. Ladies and gentlemen, government isn't easy, and I think we've come to a point where we have to begin to think collectively. And I say to my colleagues, you know, helping communities like Austin, Garfield Park, Roseland, Inglewood actually helps all of us, all of Chicago. Imagine something, think about this. If violent crime was cut in half in the seventh and eleventh districts alone, doesn't that help us all as a city? This is why we fought so hard and the resources needed around issues of violence prevention and the like from raising from, we started at three or four years ago of under a million dollars in understanding and knowing. Today, this is a little over thirty-six million dollars. And so these are steps that we're making in all the right directions. The mental health co-responder model is something that's new to Chicago, and many members of the council, we just aren't as familiar and know all of the nuances about it, similar to what violence prevention was a few years ago. And now our systems and learning will adjust. And imagine if Betty Jones and Quintonio Legre, which are residents of the twenty-eighth ward, were responded to by a crisis intervention team or some other form of a co-responder or non-responder model. Again, let not, those deaths not be in vain. Those chairs will be empty Thursday. Imagine that, empty Thursday, so we cannot allow those deaths to be in vain. So remember, we collectively are moving in a direction to help what I consider to be the least of these, and that's how we will be judged, is what we have done to help the least of these. We won't be judged about the great things that happened downtown or the things that happened out in Saginaw, to Beverly, but what do we do to help residents in North Landale, South Shore, or even out far south in Algal Gardens? Because today, the things that we're doing today, they're not easy, but today's decisions are necessary. I've said this before, and I'll say it again, everybody wants to get to heaven, but nobody seemingly wants to die. The revenue that we're seeking today is necessary. As a loaf of bread didn't cost the same thing it did ten years ago, it did cost the same thing that it did thirty years ago, and as costs increase, we must provide the resources that are necessary for government to run for it, to take care of the citizens that we've been entrusted to represent. We're sorely needing the capital. We talk about debt, we talk about other things. Let's not remember, some of the same folks that are sitting here today voted for scoop and toss, voted to pass the buck and kick the can down the road, but today have found religion, and I think that's not right. I think we have to look at what we can do to help the best of our city. Nobody's high-fiving, nobody's running the victory lap, no one is doing all of those types of things because this budget today, while not perfect, it is necessary, and it is also temporary. I do not imagine that in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we will have to borrow at the depths that we're borrowing at today. But again, when we weigh the decision between making drastic cuts to the services that our citizens so desperately need versus borrowing a little and trying to pay that back in a sooner fashion, I think that is a better decision. Our federal government is borrowing money to help keep everyone afloat, and we're hopeful that we will see additional resources come twenty twenty-one. And again, no one is running a victory lap or high-fiving behind this. Again, this is not perfect, but to me, this is temporary. And we have to remember that we have to rise all of our communities because as Garfield Park rises, so does the city of Chicago rises. As North Landale rises, that helps the city of Chicago rises. Because again, a rising tide has to lift all the boats. All of our energy, times, and conversation cannot focus on the communities that are already doing well. We have to continue to work to better the lives of all Chicagoans. So today, honestly, we have a choice. We can either look out for ourselves or look out for our city in its entirety, the entire city. And again, I want my house to be worth the same thing as my neighbors across town's houses are worth. When I look at a two-flat, if I set the same two-flat in another community in Chicago would be worth double, sometimes triple the value. We should all be wanting to have the same thing because as my assessed valuation rises and it meets some of our other communities, that means that your tax burden goes down. So again, helping me and helping the residents that are in some of our more challenging communities actually helps you. And I think that until we look at it in that way, we will continue to be in the battle of trying to one-up one another and not really look at the real things that are going to make our city sustain and grow. When I look across the city of Chicago, what I see, I see great opportunities, and in some cases, if we don't seize these opportunities, these opportunities will move and go to other places. So while this is not perfect, and believe me, nothing that we've ever done in anybody's opinion has been perfect. I think this is something that came about as of hard work. It came about as listening and talking to one another, and it came about as a way to move forward. And while we are hopeful that we will see additional sources of revenue from our state and federal partners, at the end of the day, if we don't, we have to take care of our own. And right now, this is our best path forward, and again, I look forward to working with the mayor on a lot of different issues and needs that we talk about. I don't necessarily, I'm going to say this and I'm going to be done. I'll ask this, I don't know, we talk about having things and writing, but again, our, we work on a system where we trust and work together, and I think that as long as we trust each other, we work together and move forward, it is for the betterment of our city. We do not need to give in the sense that we have to have everything, eyes dotted and t's crossed because things may change, things may work for our better, and we want to be in a position where we can do better for our constituents. So let's all work together and work toward a common goal, which is the betterment of Chicago. Not Black Chicago, not Hispanic Chicago, not White Chicago, but all of Chicago because we're all in this together. A rising tide shall, and it will lift all boats, and we're no better if our citizens that are the least of these have not been looked out for. So with this, we will be supporting this and looking forward to growing our city, growing our communities, and making Chicago as a whole a better place to work, live, and be. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Irving. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazano.
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate you and your staff. I'm going to start off with a few comments, and then I'm going to read a letter I wrote to my community. So first of all, I want to thank the budget director, the CFO, and the director of finance. Those ladies- to thank the Budget Director, the CFO, and the Director of Finance. Those ladies were awesome. Although I seem like I mainly picked on Susie Park, she was the one I was always calling with my great ideas that I thought were great anyway. So I appreciate all their help, all three of them did a great job. Also, Chairman Dow and her staff, Chairman Dow, you were awesome once again. Boy, there were some long meetings, so there's pros and cons to the Zoom. Really makes it easy for a guy like me, it's tough to get around, but we had a lot of seven hour, seven o'clock nights. So but hey, you know what, we had pretty good participation this time around. I think maybe the best participation we've ever had because it was made much easier to people. I just want to address a few things. We heard some great comments, some short comments, some long comments, some bad comments, some flat out lies, so and some great stuff. But I just want to say, Madam President, I hardly ever talk to you. I didn't need to talk to you. I always would would deal with other people. I was never threatened by anybody. I was never, my arm was never twisted on my decision. So I want to, I want to correct that. This is my 10th budget. Budgets are never easy. None of them have ever been easy. I haven't voted 100%. I did vote against the budget one time in the past, so 1 out of 10, I voted again. So once again, I do respect most of my colleagues, 96% of them anyways, what they say, and I respect everything everybody said. But it would be nice if I could say or expect 100%, but it's 96%, so that's pretty good. So with that, I just want to read my statement that I released this morning to my constituents. And here we go. 2020 has been a very difficult and unprecedented year for the residences and the businesses of the city of Chicago. The COVID-19 pandemic has taken its toll on residents and businesses alike. It also has exasperated an already dire financial situation for our city. The hotels, restaurants, and venues that make our city world-class have been shuttered most of the year. Ex revenues for most of those businesses are down hundreds of millions of dollars. The city faces tough decisions moving forward on how to keep our city operating efficiently. Over the past few weeks, I have heard from and spoken with many constituents, businesses, and labor groups regarding the 2021 budget. Of course, that's not counting 10 meetings that were pretty much an average of eight-hour meetings with the Budget Committee. After much thought and reflection, I have decided that voting yes for the 2021 budget is in the best interest of my ward, the city of Chicago, and our residents. Supporting this budget means no layoffs and no cuts in city services. I understand that many will view my decision unfavorably, and I understand and appreciate their concerns. However, the budget is not something that can be cherry picked. It is voted on in its entirety. And while there are many aspects I am not thrilled with, I believe that 2021 budget will move us in the right direction. This is not just a vote for tomorrow, but a very difficult vote, which I feel will ensure the future viability of our city and its residents. And with that, I yield my time to the next speaker, and I still kept it fairly short. Thank you very much, Madam President. And thank you, Madam Budget Director, you did an awesome job you and your staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. The Chair recognizes Chairman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. It took me a long time to decide on whether I was going to speak or not. But ma'am, I want to say and commend you because you took the time to work with each and every one of us on our likes and our dislikes, our do's and our don'ts, our wills and our won'ts. That takes time and effort upon one individual, yourself. But I will have to say, in shortening my own speech, Alderman Irvin said everything that was in my mind and in my heart regarding this budget. I hope that I'm in the boat when it rises. When the boat rises, it'll have all of us in the boat because it'll have the city of Chicago in the boat. We have so many wishes and wants and needs in our city, but it is absolutely impossible to deliver each and every one of them. We have to do things collectively in order to sustain in this city. And I know that well too often. But for you to take the time to listen, to act upon, and then for someone to say nothing is in this budget that helps our city is absolutely wrong. I have to say that I commend you again for your patience of us, for our tantrums, for I'm not gonna do's, and if you don't do this, I'm gonna do that. Because it all boils down to all of us collectively working together. Nobody wants a property tax, especially me. But I know that our city, our city has to survive some kind of way. We have to pass a balanced budget by December 31st. Now, all of those that say that I can't do this, I can't do that, present something else. Because you've heard the things that they say that you can do this without raising property taxes. But your two operatives, Susie Bennett and Jenny Benton, they are second to none. And I've worked with quite a few of them. But I want to say that all of the ideas that all of us have given to them, they have tried their best to work them in, is how we come to the budget that we have today. All of us are compassionate about what we believe in, what we believe to be true, what we believe for our constituents. All of us are. But I want to still say once more and again, I'm grateful for the words of Alderman Irvin. And I'm just as proud of the words that came from Alderman Burnett. Because I'd have to say it again, you worked your tail off as to bring this to a closure. There's some that will vote for it, some that won't. But those that have to stand on those principles, what would you tell your constituents? Oh, I didn't vote for the property tax. None of us want to. But if we have no other recourse, then that's what we need to do to balance this budget. Thank you so very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Austin. The Chair recognizes Chairman Villegas.
Good afternoon, Madam President. Members of the City Council, I want to thank Chairman Dow and her staff for working extremely diligently during this budget season. Your hearings were robust with insightful information and discussions. Important matters and follow-up requests were handled in a quick and timely manner. I also want to thank Budget Director Susie Park, Chief Financial Officer Jenny Bennett, Deputy Mayor Manny Perez, along with the entire Intergovernmental Affairs team for being completely accessible at all hours during these past few weeks. Thank you for your partnership during this budget process. Ladies and gentlemen, we need to amplify that this time in our city is like no other, and this budget decision is like no other time in our lives. We are living through a global health pandemic, a national financial crisis caused by the pandemic, and are still feeling the effects of a summer frustration that led to national unrest. No one has easy solutions. Not Mayor Lightfoot, not Governor Pritzker, not President-elect Biden, and certainly not this council. I can understand why some of you will be voting no. But let me tell you why I would be voting yes. First and foremost, we are Chicago. Chicago is so much more than just a place to live, it's a way of life. Over a century ago, the great Carl Sandburg perfectly described Chicago. He stated, hog butcher for the world, toolmaker, stacker of wheat, player with railroads, and the nation's freight handler, stormy husky brawling, city of big shoulders. And this, to me, truly encompasses why we are Chicagoans. We are a city of blue collars. We are a city of neighborhoods. We are first responders, labors, teachers, nurses. And above all, we are people trying to make for a better city and provide for our families. Our challenges are unprecedented. And that is when local governments must step up and lead. Let me repeat that, local governments must step up and lead. Residents, families, and our business community are depending on us. Mayor, you and your team proposed a budget before us, one that has taken into account concerns, issues, and priorities from members of this body. Is this budget perfect? No. But we cannot allow perfect to be the enemy here. Some of the most important things in this budget for 2021, it provides for a down payment on mental health services and public safety response during times of crisis. It ensures that clean water will flow to all Chicagoans regardless of their income. It allows us to invest in violence prevention programs. And most importantly, for the first time in decades, it provides a multi-year capital bill for the city of Chicago. This capital bill will start to attack the billions in deferred maintenance and road projects. This means jobs for our city. Over the last three decades, there have been at least three state capital bills and two federal capital bills, and yet we still have billions in deferred improvements to be made. An indication that we have to deal with our investments now at the local level. This capital bill allows for our neighborhoods to receive over $250 million to repave streets, over $40 million to fix WPA streets, over $100 million for new street lighting, over $250 million for bridges and vitals, over $130 million for our libraries, sign shop, and other necessary facilities, over $10 million for our servers and IT infrastructure. That's nearly $4 billion that we will make life better for all Chicagoans. Let me repeat that, this budget will make life better for all Chicagoans with jobs and critical work needed. I want to thank my colleagues for recognizing this much-needed investment in our city and in our neighborhoods. This vote is one of the hardest votes for me. I understand my colleagues who cannot support this budget, but as for me, is the right thing to do during this time of crisis. I want to quote author Brene Brown, imperfections are not inadequacies. They are reminders that we're all in this together. Together, we will pass this budget and take a step towards a better future for all Chicagoans. 2022 is going to be a monster of a year. I would urge my colleagues and Chairman Budget as well as Chairman Finance to immediately in the first quarter convene some meetings so that way we can begin to address efficiencies and revenues so that way we can tackle 2022 head-on with the least impact to the residents and city of Chicago. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, my colleagues from the City Council, and I urge a vote, a yes vote.
Thank you, Chairman Villegas. Our last speaker, before we turn it back to Chairman Dow of the Budget Committee, will be Finance Committee Chair Scott Wegasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, this 2021 City of Chicago budget is a tough one to pass in this virus pandemic world, but I think it is the one that is best for our city's recovery. This is a once-in-a-lifetime crisis that COVID has created with unprecedented budget challenges, knocking out over 60% of our budget revenue expectations. It has been a tough road over the last year, but I want to thank my colleagues in this administration and all the staff for their all-around efforts around transparency and compromise in getting to this balanced budget. You know, I too have felt the angst and anxieties of working almost entirely online via a portal that sometimes doesn't correctly convey our feelings or our efforts. I hope that all of this is different for us each next year. I especially want to thank Chairwoman Dow and her staff because I know it's not easy running Zoom meetings with 50-person council during a pandemic. But the scale of this economic collapse that we were facing exceeds that of the housing market crash in 2008 with the budgets of all cities suffering through this together. Our options are extremely limited. We have not been able to rely on much assistance from the federal government. And since the progressive graduated income tax we have been fighting for for many years has failed, we have lost another opportunity for fair revenue. However, the mayor has committed to other progressive revenue options that we've been working on for many years, like pilots or sales tax monetization that must happen in Springfield. We will also see an effort to reform our TIPS, and we will see a challenge to the property tax
for a while, so I didn't know what comments.
That has been gained for years to the detriment of Chicago.
Hold on one second. Alderman Burke, please put yourself on mute. Sorry, Chairman Wegasback, please continue.
It's okay, Madam Chair. Thank you. And like all municipalities, ladies and gentlemen, we are not seeing an increase in the local government distributive fund that would help alleviate some of the fiscal pain for our working families. So we need change in Springfield while we have change in the federal government to make sure that we have fiscal assistance that we need to move the city forward. Now, if and when more state or federal funding comes through our advocacy, we need to continue to spend it responsibly and work on the diversity of decades of built-up issues that we face in this city. This city budget effort really assesses, confronts, and corresponds with the facts that face us. What we have done in this crisis period is prepared ourselves for a better future. The leadership of our council, Mayor Lightfoot, and those who support our work throughout this pandemic have been forward-looking. Mayor Lightfoot's Recovery Task Force, the Capital Plan Invest Southwest, and the efforts of caucuses here today will push our tax and private dollars to communities that need it. While there is a property tax increase pegged to the CPI, I believe it is minimal, and is as minimal as possible for this pandemic. It is allowing taxpayers like us to see more predictability in our bills. It is incremental, it is responsible, and it is fair as we manage payment of all of our financial and legal obligations of this city. The revenue and management budget lines that will be voted on include a large payment for those pension obligations, for our debt service, and the budget items that are designed to get the job done while avoiding a ratings dive. We need to support all of our frontline workers in the city as well. They are the ones continuing to do the heavy lift in this pandemic. We have averted layoffs to many of our essential workers by compromise with our colleagues, with the mayor, and with the CFL. But we must continue to look at ways to be more efficient and find structural change to benefit the city in years to come. Throughout this year's budget period and into the future, we need to continue to make those investments in mental health, returning residents and workforce development, anti-violence programs, first responder training, affordable housing and homeless prevention. We need to continue efforts of structural financial oversight and performance reform in many departments, especially the police. Now, during this year, we have seen changes in policies for the first time in years. With this budget plan, Chicago is directly confronting the challenge by refusing to balance its finances on the backs of our working families and continuing to prioritize our values of equity and inclusion. We will see notice of this in the bond and legal deal teams that you have supported, bringing unprecedented minority participation in these deals after decades of asking by many of our caucuses. We've seen other efforts being taken on by Mayor Lightfoot's administration that have been welcomed. For instance, TIF clawbacks for firms failing to follow the rules of redevelopment agreements, bringing back tens of millions of dollars to our city this year. Tackling the parking meter true-up costs that were out of control and are now finely balanced, and this year, the city will come out even with the meter company on this issue for the first time in a decade. We are reissuing RFPs for contracts that were simply extended on an annual basis without competitive bidding that will now save millions of dollars. And we are working to minimize this impact every day with fiscal decisions being made with the long-term social and financial health of our city in mind. So I believe this budget represents the city's roadmap toward a fiscally responsible recovery from this COVID-19 crisis, as it focuses on the values of equity, transparency, and inclusion, and our ongoing efforts to redirect funding to our neighborhoods most in need. I stand in strong support today of this well-balanced budget as it is the best way forward and represents our best path to recovery and the future of our city. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you for all your efforts over the last few weeks and throughout this pandemic. And thank you as well, Mayor Lightfoot.
Thank you, Chairman Wegasback. Chairman Dow, I turn back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to concur in the recommendation of the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations and adopt the 2021 Code Corrections Ordinance, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of the Proceedings of November 23rd, 2020 as 02020-5718 by roll call vote.
And before I call on the clerk to perform the roll call vote, I want to remind the members of the body that you were provided with a list of the sequence of the votes. There are eight that will be taken, and you should There are eight that will be taken and you should have that sequence before you. If for some reason you do not have it, please contact IGA immediately. But we will be going through that sequence of votes that you were previously provided. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Yes.
Alderman Laspada votes yes. Alderman Hopkins.
Yes.
Alderman Hopkins votes yes. Alderman Dowell.
Aye.
Alderman Dowell votes aye. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King votes aye. Alderman Harrison. Alderman Harrison votes aye. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer votes aye. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell votes aye. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris votes aye. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal votes aye. Alderman Zalaski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Zalaski Garza votes aye. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson votes aye. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Cardness votes aye. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn votes aye. Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Burke votes aye. Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez votes aye. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Coleman, was that a yes or yea?
Yeah, aye.
Our Alderman, aye. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis votes aye. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea votes aye. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor votes aye. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins votes aye. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Rodriguez votes aye. Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez votes aye. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott votes aye. Alderman Cicho Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez votes aye. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado votes aye. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett votes aye. Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Alderman Urban votes aye. Alderman.
Aye.
Alderman Talavero votes aye. Alderman Raboya.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, just one moment. Folks, members of the body, please mute if you are not being called upon to vote. We're getting a lot of background noise. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona votes aye. Alderman Waguspack.
Aye.
Alderman Waguspack votes aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez votes aye. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Austin votes aye. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa votes aye. Alderman Viegas.
Aye.
Alderman Viegas votes aye. Alderman Metz.
Aye.
Alderman Metz votes aye. Alderman Spisato.
Next Spisato votes yes.
Alderman Spisato votes aye. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent votes aye. Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez votes aye. Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano votes aye. Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Riley votes aye. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Smith votes aye. Alderman Tunny.
Aye.
Alderman Tunny votes aye. Alderman Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner votes aye. Alderman Kappelman.
Aye.
Alderman Kappelman votes aye. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Martin votes aye. Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman votes aye. Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon votes aye. Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein votes aye. Peter?
Your Honor, there are 50 yays and no nays.
Motion to reconsider the vote, Madam President.
All those in favor of the motion to reconsider the vote signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay.
No.
Motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Dowell.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I now move to concur in the recommendation of the committee and adopt the 2021 Salary Resolution, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings on November 23rd, 2020 as R2020-864 by the same roll call vote as was applied to the 2021 Code Corrections Ordinance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
I now move to concur in the recommendation of the committee and adopt both the 2021 Motor Fuel Tax Allocation Ordinance and the 2021 Motor Fuel Tax Allocation Intergovernmental Agreement with the Chicago Transit Authority and Cook County. Both items were deferred and published and appeared in the Journal of Proceedings on November 23rd, 2020 as 02020-5745 and 02020-5744. I move to pass both items by the same roll call vote as was applied to the 2021 Code Corrections Ordinance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
I now move, Madam President, to concur in the recommendation of the committee and adopt the 2021 Management Ordinance, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 23rd, 2020 as 02020-5746 with the exception of Alderman Sawyer and Taylor, who wishes to be recorded as a no vote. I move passage by the same roll call vote as was applied to the 2021 Code Corrections Ordinance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Roll call, please.
Madam, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Alderman Laspada is an aye. Alderman Hopkins.
No on item four.
Alderman Hopkins is a no on item four. Alderman Dowell.
Aye.
Alderman Dowell is an aye. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King is an aye. Alderman Harrison.
Aye.
Alderman Harrison is an aye. Alderman Sawyer.
No.
Alderman Sawyer is a no. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Zalaski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Zalaski Garza is an aye. Alderman Thompson.
No.
Alderman Thompson is a no. Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness is an aye. Alderman Quinn.
No.
Alderman Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke.
Oh.
Alderman Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez.
Nope.
Alderman Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman.
No.
Alderman Coleman is a no. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea is an aye. Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Taylor is a no. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is an aye. Alderman Tabarez.
No.
Alderman Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Cicho Lopez.
No.
Alderman Cicho Lopez is a no. Alderman Maldonado.
No.
Alderman Maldonado is a no. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Alderman Urban is an aye. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is an aye. Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas is an aye. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is an aye. Alderman Waguspack.
Aye.
Alderman Waguspack is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
No.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is a no. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Austin is an aye. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Viegas.
Aye.
Alderman Viegas is an aye. Alderman Metz.
Aye.
Alderman Metz is an aye. Alderman Spisato.
Next Spisato is an aye.
Alderman Spisato is an aye. Alderman Nugent.
Yes.
Alderman Nugent is an aye. Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez is an aye. Alderman Napolitano.
No.
Alderman Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley.
No.
Alderman Riley is a no. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Smith is an aye. Alderman Tunny.
No.
Alderman Tunny is a no. Alderman Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner is an aye. Alderman Kappelman.
Aye.
Alderman Kappelman is an aye. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Martin is an aye. Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman is an aye. Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon is an aye. Alderman Silverstein.
No.
Alderman Silverstein is a no. Anyone I missed?
Clerk Valencia, this is Alderman Ramirez Rosa, I'm an aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is an aye. Peter?
Your Honor, there are 33 ayes, 17 nays.
Alderman Harris on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, a move that we reconsider item four.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Alderman Dowell.
Thank you, Madam President. I now move to concur in the recommendation of the committee and adopt both a series of amendments to the 2021 Budget Recommendations and the 2021 Annual Appropriation Ordinance as amended. Both items were deferred and published and appear in the Journal of Proceedings of November 23rd, 2020. The series of amendments includes the amendments to the budget recommendations and the text portion of the budget ordinance. For this vote, it is combined with the complete 2021 budget. I move passage of both items by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
No.
Alderman Laspada is a no. Alderman Hopkins.
No on items 5A and 5B.
Alderman Hopkins is a no. Alderman Dowell.
Aye.
Alderman Dowell is an aye. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King is an aye. Alderman Harrison. Alderman Harrison, is that an aye?
Aye.
Alderman Harrison is an aye. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Zalaski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Zalaski Garza is an aye. Alderman Thompson.
No.
Alderman Thompson is a no. Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness is an aye. Alderman Quinn.
No.
Alderman Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman is an aye. Alderman Moore.
Sorry, yes, aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderman O'Shea.
No.
Alderman O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Taylor is a no. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is an aye. Alderman Tabarez.
No.
Alderman Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Cicho Lopez.
No.
Alderman Cicho Lopez.
Nope.
Is a no. Alderman Maldonado.
No.
Alderman Maldonado is a no. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Alderman Urban is an aye. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is an aye. Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas is an aye. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is an aye. Alderman Waguspack.
Aye.
Alderman Waguspack is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
No.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is a no. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Austin is an aye. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
No.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is a no. Alderman Viegas.
Aye.
Alderman Viegas is an aye. Alderman Metz.
Aye.
Alderman Metz is an aye. Alderman Spisato.
Next Spisato is an aye.
Alderman Spisato is an aye. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Spessato is an I. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent is an I. Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez is an I. Alderman Napolitano.
No.
Alderman Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley.
No.
Alderman Riley is a no. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Smith is an I. Alderman Tunny.
No.
Alderman Tunny is a no. Alderman Gardner.
No.
Alderman Gardner is a no. Alderman Capelman.
Aye.
Alderman Capelman is an I. Alderman Martin.
No.
Alderman Martin is a no. Alderman Osterman.
No.
Alderman Osterman is a no. Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Aye. Alderman Silverstein.
No.
Alderman Silverstein is a no. Anyone I missed? Peter?
Your Honor, there are twenty-nine yeas, twenty-one nays.
Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris on the motion for reconsideration.
Alderman Harris moves to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
No.
No.
Motion for reconsideration is defeated.
Madam Mayor, this is Alderman Maldonado. I wish to amend my vote on item number four to a yes, the management ordinance. Number four.
I believe, sir, it is too late.
Okay.
We've moved on. Chairman Dow.
Madam President, that concludes the unfinished business relating to the Budget Committee.
Next is the Finance Committee. Chairman Wagispack.
Madam President, I move to concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee and adopt a 2021 tax levy, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 23rd, 2020, as 02020. Excuse me, 02020-5747.
Alderman Wagispack. And folks, again, if you're not speaking, please put yourself on mute. See Chairman Wagispack.
Madam Chair, let me go back and read that again. I move to concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee and adopt the 2021 tax levy, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 23rd, 2020, as 02020-5747 by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
No.
Alderman Laspada is a no. Alderman Hopkins.
No on item six.
Alderman Hopkins is a no. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow is an I. Alderman King. Alderman King is an I. Alderman Harrison.
Aye.
Alderman Harrison is an I. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is an I. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is an I. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an I. Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Zalaski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Zalaski Garza is an I. Alderman Thompson.
No.
Alderman Thompson is a no. Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness is an I. Alderman Quinn.
No.
Alderman Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman.
Alderman Coleman is a no for item six.
Alderman Coleman is a no. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an I. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an I. Alderman O'Shea.
No.
Alderman O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Taylor is a no. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is an I. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is an I. Alderman Tabarez.
No.
Alderman Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an I. Alderman Sichio Lopez. Alderman Sichio Lopez is a no. Alderman Maldonado.
No.
Alderman Maldonado is a no. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an I. Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Alderman Urban is an I. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is an I. Alderman Revoyas.
Aye.
Alderman Revoyas is an I. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is an I. Alderman Wagispack.
Aye.
Alderman Wagispack is an I. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
No.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is a no. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Austin is an I. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
No.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is a no. Alderman Viegas.
Aye.
Alderman Viegas is an I. Alderman Metz.
Aye.
Alderman Metz is an I. Alderman Spessato.
Next Spessato is an I.
Alderman Spessato is an I. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent is an I. Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez is an I. Alderman Napolitano.
No.
Alderman Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley.
No.
Alderman Riley is a no. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunny.
No.
Alderman Tunny is a no. Alderman Gardner.
No.
Alderman Gardner is a no. Alderman Capelman.
Aye.
Alderman Capelman is an I. Alderman Martin.
No.
Alderman Martin is a no. Alderman Osterman.
No.
Osterman is a no. Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon is an I. Alderman Silverstein.
No.
Alderman Silverstein is a no. Peter?
Your Honor, there are twenty-eight yeas, twenty-two nays.
Alderman Harris on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move that we reconsider this item.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
No.
The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Alderman Wagispack.
Madam President, I now move to concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee and adopt the 2021 Revenue Ordinance, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 23rd, 2020, as 02020-5743, by the same roll call vote as was applied to the 2021 tax levy and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Roll call, please.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yep.
Alderman Laspada.
No.
Alderman Laspada is a no. Alderman Hopkins.
No on item seven.
Alderman Hopkins is a no. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow is an I. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King is an I. Alderman Harrison.
Aye.
Alderman Harrison is an I. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is an I. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell is an I. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an I. Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Zalaski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Zalaski Garza is an I. Alderman Thompson.
No.
Alderman Thompson is a no. Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness is an I. Alderman Quinn.
No.
Alderman Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman.
No.
Alderman Coleman is a no. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an I. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an I. Alderman O'Shea.
No.
Alderman O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Taylor is a no. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is an I. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is an I. Alderman Tabarez.
No.
Alderman Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an I. Alderman Sichio Lopez. Alderman Sichio Lopez is a no. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado is an I. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an I. Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Alderman Urban is an I. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is an I. Alderman Revoyas.
Aye.
Alderman Revoyas is an I. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is an I. Alderman Wagispack.
Aye.
Alderman Wagispack is an I. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
No.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is a no. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Austin is an I. Alderman Ramirez.
No.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is a no. Alderman Viegas.
Aye. Aye.
Alderman Viegas.
Aye.
Alderman Viegas is an I. Alderman Metz.
Aye.
Alderman Metz is an I. Alderman Spessato.
Next Spessato is an I.
Alderman Spessato is an I. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent is an I. Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez is an I. Alderman Napolitano.
No.
Alderman Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley.
Oh.
Alderman Riley is a no. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Smith is an I. Alderman Tunny.
No.
Alderman Tunny is a no. Alderman Gardner.
No.
Alderman Gardner is a no. Alderman Capelman.
Aye.
Alderman Capelman is an I. Alderman Martin.
No.
Alderman Martin, no. Osterman.
No.
Alderman Osterman is a no. Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon is an I. Alderman Silverstein.
No.
Alderman Silverstein is a no. Peter?
Your Honor, there are twenty-nine yeas, twenty-nine yeas, twenty-one nays.
Alderman Harris on the motion for reconsideration.
I move to reconsider item seven.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
No.
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 The motion for reconsideration fails. Folks, this is the last vote. Please mute your phones when you're not speaking. Chairman Wagispack.
Thank you, Madam President. This is item number eight, the last one. I now move to concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee and adopt the General Obligation Bonds and Additional Sales Tax Bonds Ordinance, which is inclusive of the capital plan. It was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 23rd, 2020, as 02020-5749 by a roll call vote.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Alderman Laspada is an I. Alderman Hopkins.
No on item A.
Alderman Hopkins is a no. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow is an I. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King is an I. Alderman Harrison.
Aye.
Alderman Harrison is an I. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is an I. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell is an I. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an I. Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Zalaski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Zalaski Garza is an I. Alderman Thompson.
Madam Clerk, I am going to recuse myself under Rule 14 out of abundance of caution, as I did in committee.
Thompson is a Rule 14. Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness is an I. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn is an I. Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez.
What's I?
Alderman Lopez.
I'm a no.
Alderman Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman.
No.
Alderman Coleman is a no. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an I. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an I. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea is an I. Alderman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderman Taylor is a I. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is an I. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is an I. Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez is an I. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an I. Alderman Sichio Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Sichio Lopez is an I. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado is an I. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett, aye. Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Alderman Urban is an I. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is an I. Alderman Revoyas.
Aye.
Alderman Revoyas is an I. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is an I. Alderman Wagispack.
Aye.
Alderman Wagispack is an I. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is an I. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Austin is an I. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Ramirez is an I.
Yeah.
Aye.
Alderman Viegas is an I. Alderman Metz.
Aye.
Alderman Metz is an I. Alderman Spessato.
Next Spessato is an I.
Alderman Spessato is an I. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent is an I. Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez is an I. Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano is an I. Alderman Riley.
Oh.
Alderman Riley is a no. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Smith is an I. Alderman Tunny.
No.
Alderman Tunny is a no. Alderman Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner is an I. Alderman Capelman.
Aye.
Alderman Capelman is an I. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Martin is an I. Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman is an I. Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon is an I. Alderman Silverstein.
No.
Alderman Silverstein is a no. Peter?
Your Honor, there are forty-one yeas and eight nays.
Madam President, I move that we reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion to reconsider signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
No.
The motion for reconsideration fails. Is there any other unfinished business?
Madam President, that concludes all unfinished business, and I move to return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Matters on the agreed calendar. Alderman Harris.
Madam President, there are no matters on the agreed calendar today.
New business. The clerk will call the wars, beginning with the first.
Claims, free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Granted privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. An exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Burnett has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-023 to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of West Lake Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Burnett also has a proposed ordinance for correction of the City Council Journal of Proceedings of September 9th, 2020, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Your Honor, that concludes all the medic introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Mitchell, for approval of the journal.